I will call the meeting to order. Thank you very much. I want everyone to know that tonight's meeting cannot be broadcast live due to a glitch that we currently have, so it is being recorded and will be reshown. So, I thank everybody for that. The next piece on our -- is the Pledge of Allegiance, so stand if you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to make a comment on something not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Report from student rep. Owen, welcome.
Thank you. This music program held a wonderful spring concert two weeks from Tuesday, a testament to their months of hard work. The class of 2018 had their junior prom a couple Saturdays ago. I served drinks at the prom and it was a great night for everyone. And the senior prom is Tuesday, May 31st, next week. Over the past few weeks, we've had many students inducted into various academic honor societies, a true testament to their hard work. Two Thursdays ago was the biannual blood drive and over thirty students and staff alike donated to the great cause. Today, tomorrow, and Saturday, the 25th, 26th, and 27th of May, the Speech and Theater Workshop are presenting That's E 39 Fright Night in the auditorium at seven o'clock. Tickets are $10 for anyone who wishes to attend. May 19th was National College Signing Day and students in the class 2017 pursuing a higher education had their photo taken and it will be displayed on the wall in the main lobby. And those entering the Armed Forces will participate or participated and their pictures will be displayed in the front foyer. Class officers for next year have been elected. Congratulations to them. Next week is Senior Week, leading up to the graduation next Saturday. Thank you to the class 2017 for four years of hard work. And softball and baseball clinched tournament runs and are headed for the postseason. Good luck to all our spring sports teams finishing up their seasons.
Thank you very much, Owen. I should also point out that I believe I'm correct, Mr. Brannigan. Tonight at That's E is the acting debut of one Mr. Dyzel. I see. So unfortunately, we have to be here and we'll miss that, but I'm sure that will be videotaped for the rest of us.
[inaudible]
Any questions for Owen? Owen, thank you very much. As we wrap up this year, we really appreciate all you've done. I know we still have a little while to go, but we appreciate everything you bring to us and let us know about, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Next up is school community. Mr. Ness.
Hi, this is Sam.
Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, two things.
Oh, great.
I know. Greg has a report. First of all, I attended the Nichols Middle School Talent Show last night and I thought they did a great job, everybody involved. I think there were twenty-one different acts. My daughter was in one of them, so it was nice. So congratulations to all the acts that they did a great job. Secondly, I did do the training session at the Trinity of the Course and it went really well. I learned a lot.
I'm glad you had fun. Yes. Thank you. Mr. Lynch.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to go to the back of our agenda, the second page, to donations and talk about a couple of things there. There's some sizable donations. Every donation counts, but I always like to make note of, we received a check in the amount of $6,400 from the Jim Braga Memorial Fund for the High School Pathway to Business, which helps the High School Pathway to Business Program, which Mr. Braga was very, much a part of for many, many years. So, I want to thank them for that. We've also received a check in the memory of Christopher Brooks to the high school for the High School Fire Sciences Program, the Fire Science Program. I was mentioning this actually this week. We have in our school a fire science program and we also have an internship with the Police Department that students can apply for in the high school level. And I had an officer in a town that I was working in said, "What? You guys have that in the schools? That is awesome." You know, you think of college students, but you'd never, you'd never, you think about it and I think of Tim, I think of Tim Trochio, where he is today and what he did. He was in that program at one point. So, I think of the awesome programs and thankful to the, in the memory of Christopher Brooks. And then we also got another check from Hannaford for $1,000 for the high school section. It's just amazing what Hannaford helping schools has done. So, you know, these donations are great and just amazing and they really help us, especially in these different programs, and I wanted to thank all of them. And there are others from Ohio Pile to Bay State Textiles, et cetera. But I just, we're so thankful for a thing like them and Masbor and everyone else that do what they do. So, I wanted to make mention of it because it's substantial.
That's fantastic. I do also want to make, the one piece that I want to pick up on is, as we progress, next Saturday is graduation and we've talked about that and we've talked about Senior Week. But I do want to talk about the Sunday after that, which is the Community Evening School Graduation. And one of the things that Middleborough should be most proud of is it offers an opportunity for non-traditional students to get their degree and we're very happy with that and it's one of the truly best nights that I get to serve and get to be there and I know the superintendent will join me, but I do want to mention that because that's fantastic. Yes.
It's amazing. We have the evening school, we have an alternative high school within our, you know, we have all these programs that help students that can't do a traditional school's program right here in Middleborough.
Mr. Coutinho, you're up, sir.
Seems kind of like a boring time, Mr. Coutinho, and I don't think to...
They're all compasses.
Just...
Boring. Whatever. Huh? I think it would be compasses. Okay, so I don't really have a lot. Looking forward to the high school graduation and as usual, the Middleborough Education Association will be handing out carnations to the mothers of the graduating seniors and anybody else that walks out that's female, we sort of, that looks like they're older, we'll probably hand them a carnation too. We have about 250 carnations that are going to be delivered, so we do that every year.
That's fantastic. How is the end of, I mean, you're in that period in time where you're getting to the end. How does it go?
For me, it's going quite well because I had a lot of seniors. It's not around anymore.
Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
Kind of loosens things up a bit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coutinho. We appreciate it. I'll turn, now turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, studio, our audience here tonight. We have a couple of recognition items that I wanted to talk about and put that first in the order. First of all, our Title I program, as you know, sponsors our Family Resource Center. It had different beginnings, but now it's sponsored by the Federal Title I Program. And we have been invited, our administration, I believe Mrs. Andrade, Mr. Thompson, Mrs. Anderson, and Megan Quirk, the Family Resource Center Coordinator, have been invited to present at the Title I Conference, statewide conference, as a featured presenter to talk about this program. It's a model program and it has become a model program. And they've been asked and they've prepared about a 35-point slide presentation to present at that committee, but they were invited specifically from the Middleborough Public Schools to talk about the model program which our Family Resource Center has become. So I just wanted to let you know that, that that's coming up and it's great recognition for our school system. Also, a little more positive PR. Watching Channel 4 a week and a half or so ago and we had some great little PR for the Nichols Middle School and I would invite Marty Gagin down to talk about it very briefly and Greg Thomas is coming down too. He was an important part of it. Greg Thomas is the Assistant Principal, as you know. And they're going to talk a little bit about a program that they've put together that accentuates the positive here at Nichols Middle School. Mr. Gagin.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Good evening, everyone. At the start of the year, a friend of mine made a presentation that I saw that he ended up having signs and he would hold up signs for kids as they were walking in the building. And I just thought it was a sensational idea, so I copied it and wanted to do it. And Greg, well, Mr. Thomas and Mrs. Ray also do it on Thursdays and we hold up these signs for, for the kids to come in. And Mr. Thomas has a friend of his from college, Brian Foley.
Brian Foley. My college roommate is, works at Channel 4 and has been there for many years and he's kind of fallen in love with the sign program and he presented the idea to Paula Ebbin at Channel 4, she does the education piece, and she fell in love with it too. So, we're fortunate to have Channel 4 come down and film us on May 4th and watch what we do with the kids every Thursday.
So, we have the video here to show you and if we could put the microphone.
Thursdays are very special at one local middle school. In fact, the administrators work to make them picture perfect, you could say, especially with young teens. Words and how you use them can carry a lot of weight.
Certainly can, but at one school in Middleborough, they're using words and pictures to motivate students bright and early. It's tonight's Eye on Education. Every Thursday, John T. Nichols Middle School Principal Marty Gagin greets his students with a selfie.
Perfect, Olivia. Great job.
A sign.
Nice.
And a little encouragement to start their day.
Awesome.
In fact, it's something all the administrators take part in.
I was skeptical. I wasn't sure. It was, you know, Mr. Gagin had some crazy ideas sometimes.
Assistant Principal Greg Thomas had his doubts at first, but Gagin knew he was on to something the minute a colleague shared the idea at a conference.
I thought that was the greatest idea on the face of the planet. He started last year by tweeting out on a Thursday, pictures with kids and the signs and they said different things on them. "You are terrific. You are great," kind of building them up and a nice way to welcome kids in the school.
Students took to it quickly and a social media phenomenon was born.
All week, we look forward to Thursday.
It's nice to know that your principals are people.
It's created, I think, a positive culture here.
This past week's theme, may the fourth be with you.
Fourth be with you guys.
The signs have kind of let us show them that we're, we know they're here, we're glad they're here.
And everyone agrees the payoff is worth every slip of paper.
Sometimes it says in research that the only person that says good morning to them or the only person that smiles to them is sometimes their teacher.
The signs have such good messages on them that I think it gives kids like a smile on their face and it gives them confidence throughout the day and I feel like that's something every student needs if they want to do good in school.
All right.
Nice.
They can see so many negative messages online, you know? And the program's become so popular, if any of the administrators take a Thursday off, parents start asking about them and what's going on. And one week when there was a snow day this winter, Principal Gagin broke out the camera on Friday to make sure he kept the hashtag going. The hashtag is PositiveSignThursday.
I think so often the relationship between administrators and teachers and the students can be tense and then there's that whole dynamic. This kind of breaks down that little wall there.
True. Your mom is a teacher.
She was, forty years at an elementary school.
And you know, people remember her all their lives.
They will, they absolutely do.
Awesome.
Fantastic. Thanks for sharing that.
Any questions from the committee? Comments?
I happen to be here today for another meeting and I saw a bunch of kids come out and grab you out of the cafeteria and the excitement level is just there and I think that's awesome to have that excitement and spirit within the school and I appreciate everything you guys do and I see the tweets and they make me smile in the morning when I'm on a job site and it's cold and rainy, but I think it's awesome, so I appreciate it and we all, we all do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very much. We did see it live today.
I'm walking through the halls. It was great, it was great. Second, I want to take it, the number one, number two now. Athletic Director, as you know, as I've announced to the school committee and sent out through press release, we have hired a new athletic director who will begin July 1. There will be some transition time for him and Mr. Perry has graciously agreed to speak with him on the phone and do some talking back and forth and possibly meeting him. His name is Ryan Sylvia. He, for seven, the past seven years, has been the Athletic Director at Bishop Stang High School. He's a younger gentleman who's coming in, recently married, he has a child on the way, was looking around the neighborhoods when I took him around the town, which is lovely. He currently resides and that's why I put in the press release that he currently resides. I'm not promising that he's moving to Middleborough, but he definitely liked the downtown area certainly and was very pleased with the facilities that we had and with the promise of facilities for the future. So, and he'll be part of that process, obviously, as we move forward and possibly building a new high school. So, congratulations to Ryan Sylvia, our new athletic director, and hopefully in our next meeting or perhaps later, he could not make it tonight, but at our next meeting, we can possibly have him here in person to say hello to everyone and introduce himself to the Middleborough community. So, that's our new athletic director, Ryan Sylvia. He was recently inducted into the old Rochester Regional Hall of Fame, which is a community he grew up in Marion and he's been recognized for that. So, congratulations to Ryan Sylvia. Moving on, we have our school improvement plans for this year, something we look forward to every year. The order, we're going to switch this around a little bit with the school committee request, basically, that we start with a younger crew and we start with our entry grades and end with our exit grades. So, we welcome to the table, Mrs. Holly Anderson, Mr. Derek Thompson, and Mrs. Lisa Andrade, who are going to present together the joint goals of the elementary level. Keep in mind that we're tying these plans to our new strategy for continuous district improvement and as we move forward, you'll hear comments with regard to that and how they are integrated and tied in. So, welcome to Lisa, Holly, and Derek. Thanks for coming and the floor is yours.
Derek's first. Sorry, just one second.
While we're waiting for this to set up, there was an interesting piece within our packet under action items for the Second Annual Kindergarten Summer Social at the Soul Homestead. And I think this is a great program and while we, while we have Holly up here and I think that's just something that I would actually make a motion to, we approve that letter to go out for that fundraiser at this time, if you don't mind.
Second discussion. Holly, could you talk to us a little bit about the letter and the fundraiser itself?
Sure. So, this was a program that we instituted last year as part of our Countdown to K. It was super successful last year. We had a large number of families who came to the K Summer Social. It was probably the hottest day of the summer. We were all melting. We had Carol Carver there and she had squirt bottles with cold water running around squirting everyone, but a piece of it is of course, you know, a picnic outside and so the letter is looking for some donations so that we can provide a picnic dinner for families. We partner with the libraries, so our children's librarian comes and does an activity. It's, it really is a lot of fun and we're very excited for it and it's in August, August 16th.
Any questions? Mr. Chair.
As an elementary principal, we had a program called Road to Kindergarten and I know that Megan Quirk had reached out and Michael Bro at the time, last year, had reached out to the folks in Bridgewater, talking about how that went and how important it was and they heard how important it was and I was able to talk about how important it was. And we've been able to bring this in, Countdown to Kindergarten, very similar program, but it gets these families together socially, it gets these children together socially and they get to know each other, get to know whose rooms they're in sometimes, in some cases. And it's just a very positive, positive program for a sort of that relationship building and that friendship developing. So, it is, it is a great program and thanks to Holly. And I want to mention Megan Quirk is a very important part through the Family Resource Center, very important part of the framework of this and setup of this entire program. So, thank you to her also.
Any other comments or questions? Motion on the table is to approve the letter requesting donations. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. So, I, I get to get us started, so as we sit down here tonight, I guess my job is to set the stage for the three school plans. We spend a lot of time working on our school improvement plans together, making sure that our school plan, our plans are rooted in student data, parent survey, teacher survey data, and then making sure that the three schools are aligned, which is a challenge. So, what you'll see in our plans again this year, which we're very proud of, is five very similar goals. When you look through the details of our plans, there's some subtle differences from goal to goal, especially in our last two goals. But our plans are rooted in data and more importantly, in research. And one piece that I, we wanted to point out to you is, in John Hattie's book, Visible Learning, he had synthesized over 500,000 research studies related to student achievement and what he found in that, in his study was that teachers can have an impact on student achievement regardless of the circumstances that kids are coming from. And some of the things that we do are more impactful than others. And what you'll see in our plan is really a commitment on these pieces here. These are things that Hattie has found to be the most impactful and I think, speaking for the three of us, we can probably say these are rooted within our plan and what we're doing in all three schools. So the first of those is teaching with clarity, making sure that our teachers are clear about what we want our students to know and be able to do. The next is providing formative evaluation of student performance, so not just test results, but as we are teaching and we know what we want our kids to know and be able to do on a day-to-day basis in our interactions with kids, checking along the way to see if they're able to do that. And then one thing we've been really focused on is providing feedback to kids, growth-producing feedback, targeted, specific feedback to kids that actually lifts their thinking and gets them to that next level. Those first three bullets are really found within the professional development that we're doing with the curriculum that we're using, our partnership within Leslie University. The next step is response to intervention, making sure that we have organized systems of support for kids, not just kids who are on IEPs, but also the whole pre-referral process and kids that are struggling academically. And it looks a little bit different building to building, but we've all committed to that. Teacher estimates of student achievement challenging the belief set teachers have about the kids, that it's our job to guarantee that every student learns, every kid that walks through the building, that they can do it, we believe that they can do it and our teachers are equipped with the skillset to get them to the next place. Student confidence and efficacy. We've been doing a lot with the growth mindset in all three buildings in different ways and just getting kids to believe that they can. Doesn't matter what circumstance they come from, but when they walk across our door, they're going to hear a message from the teachers and the administrators that they can, if they work hard, do anything that they want to do. And lastly is collective teacher efficacy, which is really getting teachers to understand how to embrace those things we have different understandings about and work together because we're a lot stronger together and we can really solve any problem when we put our minds together.
So, I have the first goal. You'll see that, again, as Derek said, that our goals are very similar in all three plans, so we've kind of put them together. This first goal focuses on our ELA literacy instruction and we're really excited. We brought to last, in our last plan, the conversation around starting our journey with the Literacy Collaborative and partnering with Leslie University. And a big piece of that was sending two coaches to be trained in the model so that they could then be the experts who are in-house every day working with our teachers and come back. So you'll see in the first two bullets there, we've developed the first cohort who will be working with those two coaches. It's a cohort of about 22 teachers and the plan is that they will be spending 22-hour sessions, that's 20 separate sessions, each two hours of training with those coaches so that they will become well-versed in the model. A second piece of that is that they will be receiving one coaching session every two weeks, so all 22 of those teachers will be working one-on-one with those coaches to really hone their skills and develop that literacy model. And a piece of that is that those two coaches have developed, I brought a hard copy of the plan, they have developed this PD plan for the school year and you can see that it's four or five pages long, it's very specific, they've mapped out the dates, they've mapped out the topics for the entire school year. So it really is a comprehensive approach to a focus on literacy in our grades three through five. So, this, the next part of that is the sort of second phase of our plan of working with the Literacy Collaborative and that's heading into the primary grades where we send two coaches to be trained in the primary grades. So, the first year of that, it's really all about the coaches learning the model. So they won't be doing a whole lot of direct coaching, it's next year that you'll see a similar plan coming from them. The next three bullets are really interrelated because they're part of our approach to developing a comprehensive approach to meeting the literacy needs in our district. So, you'll see that it's a focus on bringing in professional resources, bringing in classroom libraries, really infusing our bookrooms with high-quality literature. Those are all pieces that are required to have a fully comprehensive approach to literacy instruction. The next bullet focusing on the continuum of literacy learning, that's really the textbook that sort of becomes the teacher's bible when it comes to literacy learning. It's very hefty, it's very involved and the teachers become really well-versed with all of the aspects of that text. And then there are some pieces of that that are focused on the assessment where we're taking a look at what are the students learning, how far have they come. STAR 360 is our benchmark assessment system that we're using in grades one through five. The next piece of that bullet is leveled literacy intervention and reading recovery. The greatest piece of having this partnership with Leslie University is that much of it is based on the research of Marie Clay and it starts with meeting the needs of struggling readers in first grade with reading recovery. A second piece of that is leveled literacy intervention, which is a system that is, again, based on similar research, but it meets the needs of students who are beyond first grade or who may not need as intensive an intervention. But the best part of it is it's a comprehensive approach with similar language built throughout. The next two bullets, continuing with the structure of PLC and RTI to ensure an effective implementation. So a big piece of this is we're ensuring that our teachers are continuing to work in their PLCs, those are our professional learning communities. So teachers are working together, studying together, and learning together as professionals. We will be monitoring student progress and responding to their needs as we progress through the school year. And then finally, the bullet at the end is, we'd like to continue our focus on the needs of special education, working with Deb Harris, again, on effective co-teaching training. So you'll see this as a bullet or as an action item in this particular goal, but really our focus and our dedication to improving special education is really infused throughout the entire plan. And I know Carolyn Lyons is here tonight to help support us, she's there as a cheering section. So you may not see that particular bullet in any or action item in any of the other goals, but really it's because it's truly infused throughout our approach.
Goal two focuses on our math instruction and as you know from last year, we began to, with our Envisions 2.0 with, which was an update of the program that we had currently been using. A piece of this, as Holly explained, with special education being infused throughout our whole plan, so is technology. We batted this around a little bit about where does technology fit in our plan and it's really hard to say it fits here because it doesn't. It fits throughout the whole plan. Technology is used in RTI, technology is used in our general instruction, and technology is used in our assessment, technology is used for our children when they're producing PowerPoints and presentations. So it was very difficult to find a place to put it because it's everywhere and we've had the luxury of having tablets, additional tablets purchased this year and it's made such a tremendous difference for our kids, having access to them much more frequently. So that's been a huge, huge help for us in, at the complex. So we are going, going to continue with our implementation of Envisions. We know that the first year of any implementation can be rocky and yes, it was and we know that. So going forward, what we're looking at is possibly some professional development provided by Susan Looney implementing the workshop model using what we have, our program, which is 2.0. We were afforded through a grant, through HBB with a DSEC grant and he so kindly invited some of my teachers to take part in it too, with, working with Susan Looney with this model. I was lucky to send a couple of... I was lucky to send a couple of second-grade teachers, and I know Derek had several of his teachers attend, and it was by far, you know, the teachers spoke so highly about it. And it's really about, you know, beginning the mapping process, we began the mapping process in grade two, but it's not about teaching a program, and that's really what's important. And Susan really has allowed our teachers to look at this as standards, and what standards our kids need, and what they need from grade level to grade level, and how to support that from grade level to grade level. And developing mathematicians, not just, you know, two plus two is four, but really creating an understanding of mathematics, and that is so key for our children. We're developing these maps with her guidance, and it's, like I said, it's been wonderful so far with working with grade two. The amount of work she was able to do in one session with that group was incredible. We are again going to continue with our structure, our professional learning communities, and our responses to intervention. Again, just like with ELA, it's with a focus to make sure we have effective implementation, we're monitoring children constantly. Is our instruction, is our program, is what we're doing working? And if not, how do we fix it? How do we, you know, mid-course say, you know what, this isn't working for this child or this child? How do we enhance it? If we have it working, if it's working great and we have students that need enhancements, how do we do that? And where do we do that? And where does it fit appropriately? And another added, which again is something that we're going to be doing across all subject areas, is using our teachers as our, you know, they're our go-tos, they're the professionals that we're going to be sharing observations and learning walks, peer observations, peer learning walks. We learn best from each other. I mean, I learned so much from my colleagues sitting here, and it's important for the teachers to learn from each other as well. We have an incredible, incredible group of teachers that we work with every single day that brings so much to the table. And giving them the opportunity to share their gifts and to share their talents with each other is such a great, great gift that they can give each other.
So the third goal in all three of our schools is to ensure the alignment and implementation of curriculum instruction with the new Massachusetts Science and Technology and Engineering standards. This is something we haven't done a lot with yet, and we need to. So the standards are new to us. And our hope, our Plan A, if you will, is we're looking at Discovery Ed Techbook for moving forward with our science instruction that's, you know, it's a proposal, budget proposal, so we do have a Plan B, a backup. But with that Plan A would be some professional development for teachers, which would come from Discovery Ed on the use of Techbook and using that resource. We also have plans to develop some common assessments, again, to just monitor that implementation, make sure things are working. And we also want to be careful not to just teach a program. So we will begin the process of mapping out the science standards to make sure that we're teaching the standards, not just the, just the content. And then lastly, that last bullet there about the science practice standards is, much like we're doing with, and this has been the bulk of our conversation, much like we're doing in math and in literacy, we're teaching the mathematician, we're teaching the reader, we're teaching the writer. In science, we want to teach the scientist, not the program, not just the content, not making sure they memorize things, but that kids can act and think like scientists, so really taking that inquiry-based approach. I don't know who had this part. So the next three goals are the same in all three schools, but we acknowledge we're in a little bit different places with each of these, so we're going to speak to Goals Four and Five separately for each school.
So for Goal Four at MAC, it's, again, it's the same for all three of us, that Goal Four, improving student performance by developing a comprehensive family and community partnership. And at MAC, as we heard earlier, a big piece for us is working really closely with Meg Quirk and our Family Resource Center. I mean, she truly has been instrumental for me as a new principal, developing programs and plans for me to be more connected as a principal with our community and with our students. So a huge piece of that is all of our plans around our Countdown to K program. It's really exciting. We had our spring incoming K orientation, which was really well-attended. It went really well, actually Chris Phoenix was there because he's going to be a new parent in the building, gave me some positive feedback, which I appreciated. In June, we have our block party, it started, I think it's now in its third year. But it's a really fun day to close out the school year for our current kindergarteners, and it's a really fun day for incoming kindergarteners as well. They get to come and meet outgoing families and hear something about what it's like to be in K, but they also get to be together at our block party for that. So new families are invited to that on June 9th. And then, again, we have our August 16th Soul Farm Family Picnic. And then some other plans, on the very first day of school, Meg will be holding a boo-hoo woo-hoo breakfast for families as they are bringing their kindergartner to kindergarten for the very first time. I'm not sure which side will be more popular this year. When we polled the audience for our K orientation, we asked how many of you are new kindergarten families? The bulk of the audience raised their hands, which I thought was very, very exciting. We have a whole lot of new families coming into kindergarten. So maybe they'll be on the boo-hoo side and a little sad, or maybe they'll be on the woo-hoo side. But that's kind of a fun little twist to sending their kiddo off to kindergarten. And then, another plan that I had that actually came out of some of our conversations that the three of us have had about meeting the needs for summer reading, we talked and batted around some ideas about doing some summer reading programs ourselves in our buildings, and I really loved that idea. So one of my plans for the summer is to have a storytime with the principal, so that kindergarteners could come in over the summer and sit down and just have a simple read aloud with me. So maybe lessen a little anxiety, have a little visit to the school building. So I'm hoping to implement that this summer. And then Marie Gates is our reading specialist, and she has not only worked on a program for summer reading for our outgoing kindergarteners, but she's developed a little kindergarten summer scavenger hunt with a lot of fun activities that she's sending out to families. So that's awesome. The last little piece, I think I'm talking too much at this point, but one of the things I really wanted to do was bring back a program that I think was in place a number of years ago when Mrs. Leveque was here. She would run a volunteer training program where she would actually help volunteers understand what their role is in the building. And I think especially with brand-new parents coming in, this is their first time in our school buildings, they might need a little help understanding what are their options for volunteering, what are the parameters around it and expectations for that. And I thought that was a really good thing to think about bringing back. So that's a plan that I have. As well as something that I know Mrs. Andrade will bring up, I need to work on the website. It's definitely, Derek tends to be the more proficient at the website presence, and I aspire to reaching that. So that's one of my own personal goals for next year. Yeah, sorry. Should I go on to Goal Five too? Yeah, okay. So for Goal Five, providing and maintaining a safe, physical, and emotional environment to support instruction that meets 21st century learning demands. So a huge piece for us at the MAC was really focusing on social-emotional learning. It's really been, it's come to the forefront as a need for us in our building. So we developed some action steps in our plan for this particular goal that would focus in on that. One of the pieces that needed to be strengthened was developing a universal screener so that we can have a better understanding for what are the social-emotional needs for our students. It actually was a screener that was developed, I believe, at MKG, and HBB is also using it. So we are implementing it for this current class of students who are leaving us. So teachers will be gauging what are the needs for their students, and it will give the grade one teachers a better idea of their incoming students. We will be continuing our positive program, the Bucket Fillers Program. It's language that's used throughout the building. Teachers use it every day, bucket fillers are announced every day, students start to use the language too, they'll walk by and tell me that they've been a bucket filler, or they'll remind each other. There was one day that I had three students walk up to me and say, there are bucket dippers all over the place, and that's when students are making some mistakes. Just, it was kind of funny that it was coming out of their mouths. Another piece was we have a response team program in our building for when there's a more emergency need for assistance, for more bodies to help out. If there's only one person in the room and there's things going on that needs a little assistance, we have a team with radios, they can respond to that need, because we have very young learners who sometimes need some help. So we're working on streamlining that process and that procedure. And then, we're also going to be strengthening our PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support. So those are additional supports that would be put into place in our school to really focus in on that social-emotional learning.
So I have the same goal for our Goal Four, improve student performance by developing comprehensive family and community partnerships. Again, our after-school programs have, this was our first full year of them, and we're looking to add more next year. It gets sometimes a little, Drama Club is huge, and we sometimes have disappointment, but what we do is we add you on for the, you're the first one in in the fall. So we're hoping to add more spots for that next year. Again, the Family Resource Center, I can't even count how many times we've referred to Meg and referred families to Meg this year, it's absolutely wonderful. In the summer, we do have a summer reading program, and we have our summer reading kickoff coming, coming up, and our children leave Mary Kay Good for the summer with a book that's provided from the proceeds from a harvest dance that our teachers support and do for us. But we also have a book swap. One of our teachers, Robin Kuquetts, put together a book swap, and it was just in the summer. We did it, you know, in its adult books and kids' books, and it started with bring one, take one. But now, you know, it's kind of open to everyone, and we've actually had such a great response that we actually do it throughout the school year as well. And a few times a month, we, a few times a year, we put the books out, and it allows the kids, you know, kids, books that they've gotten from, we see a lot of MAC books come through. It's great, the kids love it. And it gives them, you know, they've already read their summer reading, so it allows them to swap out some books, so it's a great program. Continue to increase our grade-level parent involvement activities. You know, I must say, the Mary Kay Good PTA is amazing. They, they're the go-tos for everything. It's just, I'm such a lucky principal to have the PTA that we have. But all of our families, you know, there's times that I've gone to parents and, you know, asked for, can you just staple, I mean, you know? And it's amazing the things that parents are able to support with us. You know, we have a lot of, you know, parents that, working families, and parents do things at night for us, and it's wonderful, and I'm so grateful to them. Our transition meetings at all grade levels, this is something I'm actually very proud of the teachers. They take a lot of time and a lot of effort to place children into the next grade level. We've actually even strengthened our MEPC to the complex, actually, not just Mary Kay Good. Transition meetings, we're actually meeting tomorrow with our grade, a representative from our grade one in K. And we've also included the middle school, we have, Mr. Thompson and I went and met with Mr. Gagan and his sixth-grade team about transitioning, documents that would be helpful for them to know, you know, they're our kids, they'll be up here soon enough, but they're still ours. But what's going to be helpful for them to know our kids the best that they can, along with special education. And sometimes kids that just need a little extra support, and what does that look like? You know, every child that leaves the complex, you know, we want to make sure that they have the tools that they're going to need to be successful, no matter where they go. Sorry. I know with special education, Carolyn's team does an incredible job with making sure that all the documentation goes with those children and placements are made appropriately. Great, Goal Five, to create an environment where students feel emotionally and physically safe, so their learning potential can be maximized. We're continuing with our school store ticket redemption. We did kind of steal this a little bit from HBB, I'm not going to lie. But it's been wonderful. Our kids are very excited about it, and, you know, the teachers actually are using it in their, it started out just used in our cafeteria, and now it's used throughout the school, and teachers have adopted it for their classes, and it's working out great. We actually had a class pull their tickets together to purchase something in the school store for a child in a lower grade this year. So it was pretty, it was pretty cool, must admit. It was amazing. We are continuing with our respectful, responsible, and ready program. We are continuing, we had a great success. Thank you to Jennifer Rusher and Brittany Silva with our town meeting. We did that monthly, we didn't do it during our testing period, it was just, it was difficult with makeups, but monthly meeting for each grade level. And it's where we kind of introducing our Superflex and our social thinking programs. But it also allows us to meet about other things. We've had some things come up at each grade level that we needed to address at the grade level. And, you know, first graders need some different things than fifth graders need to be talked to about. So it's nice to have them together as a group, and it's really the only time once a month that they're together as a group, and it's powerful to see them in that group. And we go over the beginning of the year, the expectations for the cafeteria, for, you know, the halls, for the bus, bus safety, so it allows us to have those conversations. But the social thinking piece, they're having the conversations, I hear, like you say, about the bucket fillers, I hear, oh, I think she's yellow, she's in the yellow, you know? And it's interesting that the kids are picking up on the types of languages, the type of vocabulary that we're using with our, with our students.
So we have very similar Goal Four and Five, these are just, I guess, some of the bullets, a few of the highlights from each of these goals, there's actually a lot within both of these goals. So our Goal Four and Five have been the same for a number of years. We tailor these goals each year in response to our parent survey. We had 285 respondents this year to our parent survey, which we were proud of. And that survey data has been really helpful for us tailoring these goals and kind of getting us to that next level. So much like MAC and MKG, the Family Resource Center is a really big part of that, improving student performance by developing a comprehensive family and community partnership. And a lot of the work that we're doing with Megan in that Family Resource Center is actually also available to both, to all three schools. It's really been about helping families access some of the community resources. Megan's secured a number of grants, she's running parent support groups for grandparents that are primary caregivers for home, she's all sorts of things. Support groups for families with kids that have social-emotional issues that aren't on IEPs. It's amazing the amount of work that's being done through the Family Resource Center and the impact it's having for us, because I think as families are a little bit calmer at home, kids do better in school. So also through our survey, we are continuing to try to do a better job communicating the parents about the curriculum that we have in school. We have a family math night coming up in a couple of weeks for kindergarten and first-grade parents and second-grade parents on our math program that one of my teachers has put together, and we have some plans going into next year for more of that. Also, we have a plan to really, we have been doing the social thinking and Superflex curriculum now for a couple of years. We've had a lot of parents asking for resources so that they can use the language at home. They know that we're using a lot of the language, much like Mrs. Andrade said, you know, staff and kids are using it all throughout the building, they come home, talk about it, parents want to be equipped with the ability to have that same conversation at home. And then, another big thing that we've been doing that I'm proud of is our homework expectations. Going into this year, every teacher at every grade had consistent homework expectations, and all of my grade one classes, all of my grade two classes. So we give about the same amount, and we have the same defined purpose for homework as well, which in our building is not for parents to teach at home, but to teach the kids personal responsibility. We're finding that our kids are much more capable in a lot of ways, certainly academically, but sometimes that personal responsibility, it's kind of amazing sometimes what fifth graders don't have. And so we've been using homework as a vehicle to have that conversation and start to talk to kids about just being responsible for your homework. We don't want parents doing it at home, we don't want them completing projects at home, we don't want them driving it in when the kids forget it. We want the kids to be responsible for that. So our fifth goal is ensuring adequate social and coping skills, much like the other two building. We're pretty far along with the social thinking curriculum, we're moving into the Superflex curriculum this year, which is the one I spoke about last year, it has characters, and we're teaching the kids about the different characters and what they mean and how they can relate to them. It's been really cool, we're doing most of that work through our community meetings. And what that really is all about is recognizing that not all of our kids are socialized at home to meet with success in the classroom, and that we need to teach kids how to sit, you know, meet those expectations and teach those social and coping skills so that we're using the same language. So for us next year, a big next step will be also utilizing that same universal screener that both MKG and MEG are using. And what that means is that we're, all of our teachers are collecting data, and we're recognizing kids that are struggling, and then we're developing supports for the kids who are struggling with that. Currently, our Adjustment Counselor and our School Psychologist are the two people that provide most of those supports, and then, you know, teachers are kind of on their own in some respects, and, you know, everybody's working really hard. But this is about training more people than just our school psychologists and Adjustment Counselor, and how to provide a tier-two intervention, so that is an intervention for a kid who's struggling. So, we have plans to train our gym teachers next year, so in our Walk to Learn block, we'll not only have interventions for reading and math, but also interventions for kids who are struggling socially and emotionally.
So, as Mr. Lynch stated at the beginning, this all circles back to our Big Rocks for our strategic plan for our district, and this is what we started with. We had this in front of us when we began our process of looking at the needs and the plans for each of our schools. And, yes, they are very similar, because it shouldn't matter where you come out of. You're getting the best quality education as a Middleborough public school student, and it's because we followed this plan. This was what was our roadmap to providing what we feel is the best for our kids. Any questions?
I actually have a topic to start with. I want to talk about, you had mentioned before, the conversation with parents and language. And, my question revolves around the idea of, especially for the behavioral pieces, how do we sort of put on the same page? And is there a way, for example, with both of the elementary schools using tickets, is there a way we could send tickets home with the parent to give out at appropriate times and so that it's just an extension? And, you know, these ideas are unified at home and at school?
My assistant principal, Chris Phoenix, actually brought up the idea of giving the bus drivers tickets. That was one of the first steps. He actually, we talked about the idea about giving, starting next year with giving a roll of tickets to, you know, and we could have a separate, for our kids that share a certain bus, we could have, you know, bus tickets or whatever, but I think that's a great idea to be able to carry that over to the home, I think is, you know, if you earn, you know, earn tickets for, you know, we have lots of prizes for different amounts and stuff, I think that's a great idea. Like I said, we had the conversation about the bus, doing it on the bus. Yep, sorry.
The other question I have is, as we are continuing to see, you know, development, especially from the Family Resource piece, that's helpful in making our kids better learners based on what goes on. I'm concerned that at some point we reach an overload. We see it at the Council on Aging, we provide programs at the Council on Aging in which the staff can't see people, because there's only so much time they have, there's only so many hours, and they can't do it. So I'm very concerned about at some point, given that we have one person for essentially three schools, that we need to look, maybe look in a different direction and need to add pieces, because if we're going to continue, it can't, we can't make it overload, because then it will hurt the families that we currently have, so.
Well, the only thing I'd say to that is, you know, a couple of years ago, we had a hard time getting people to see the need for it, and we convincing a PTA to give us $7,000 just to even get it started. So, Megan's just done an amazing job, and I think, I agree, I've said from the beginning, I think we're going to need another person eventually, I don't think we're there yet, but, you know, there's a lot of value in the work that she's doing and the way that she's doing it, she has a really good way about her and connecting with the community and just people recognizing that, you know, we have access to the kids, and I think our kids, our families, like, they don't just walk out the door and, you know, it's not a separate thing for them. So I think trying to bring everybody together to wrap families up a little bit tighter is a good thing, and I think people are seeing the benefits of that, so.
Important to me, and especially to this group, is that we want to make sure that we, I know she uses lots of community resources, but I'm pretty certain that we run into situations where there are no community resources. And we really, as citizens, have to advocate and make sure that those resources come to Middleborough in some way, shape, or form, because we know our kids need them, so we have to figure out. Derek, you and I have talked before about, it's difficult for parents to go to places and get help because there's not public transportation. And so, it, you know, it seems easy for somebody who drives in the car to be able to drive over to Plymouth to go to an office, that's not the case if you don't have a car. Or if you have to go to court, to be able to get to the courthouse without a car even becomes much more difficult and opens up families for failure.
Well, I think one of the next steps, I've spoken to Megan about this, we need to think about implementing a survey to all the kids in the district, whether it's the YRBS or the Communities of Care Survey, and be able to start to attach some data to the gaps that exist in the community, because there is a lot of grant money out there. But, we need to first have that data to support the need.
And there's also ways to get providers in if you show that you have the need, because I think providers are open to trying things, and we've talked before about just finding space at schools for providers to be able to use for short periods of time. And once you show a provider that it works, and they can come here and get clients, then all of a sudden, they find space themselves.
I just, I just wanted to say that I think one of the exciting things about working with Megan with the Family Resource Center is that she's always thinking about what else she can do for our families. It's always what's next, what's next. And while I hear what you're saying, that can run to that critical mass piece, it's really exciting to sit down with her and have those conversations. Our last conversation was around, she and I are always talking about, because in our building, we have little ones, and when little ones get hungry, it's really hard to learn. So, whenever we walk by each other in the mornings and our little ones are heading to the breakfast program, we joke and we say, we're just going to feed the world, we're just going to keep on working until they're all eating breakfast every single morning. And a piece of that is she and I learned that there is a program where we could possibly work to bring a food site here to Middleborough where students who are food insecure throughout the summer would be able to go and get two meals every single day, and as long as they're under 18, that no questions asked if we have a food site here. There's one in Taunton, but for our families here, that's not close enough. So I just, it's very exciting that she has these plans.
Other questions? Ms. Juman.
Thank you. One of the graphics that was in the Berklin piece was the homeschool connection piece, and it was shocking to think that 25% of the people don't know about the Family Resource Center. And it's such a resource that I'm wondering why, why don't you, but, that's about, it kind of made sense to me when I thought about it, because if you're working 50 hours a week to try to make ends meet, sometimes you don't know what's going on. So, and what you have in your plans, all of you have in your plans regarding that outreach to, you're trying harder to let people know, and I really do appreciate that, because that was a telling number. 285 respondents is a huge, I thought was a great response, because it gave you some real good data. And that was one of the graphics, I remembered, I had to go find it, because I said, wow, a quarter of the people don't know yet. So, one of the other observations I made tonight was, as you're sitting here, is you take pieces from each other, and you use steel, whatever you want to call it, whatever it does, if it works, you do it. And, six years ago, I remember sitting here, my biggest concern, Greg, you remember, my biggest concern was splitting two schools apart and having these two schools with two separate identities, was that we were going to have one school doing something, but I liked that you guys are working together, and this is, my fears are gone because of that, but six years ago, I was scared to death of this split up. And I'm so happy that you guys work together like this, and we saw it tonight in the presentation, as you say, oh, you had this, and I took that, and we're implementing it together. It's awesome, and just keep up that work. The volunteer training, absolutely, I thought it was great, that you're trying to bring that back, because there are a lot of parents who are afraid to volunteer because they don't know, and with, like you say, all the hands of all these new parents. Now, you don't have to be afraid, we're going to tell you everything about it. And when you said about the new parents and the volunteer training, because I remember my wife going through the volunteer training, and it was, it was almost relaxing to know. And then it continues on beyond Mary Kay. And sometimes they come back to the Early Childhood Center to help you. When their parents get older, they'll come back and help too, because with all these freshman parents that you're going to have, you're going to need that help. So, I thought you guys covered a lot, and you covered a lot in the paperwork too, that was the actual presentations, so I appreciate that.
These are really well thought out and great. I really like the transition program you guys talked about, that's, I think a lot of schools need to do that. Because I know as I'm working at a high school, I get kids from the middle school, and it's just, here you go, and, you know, we don't know anything about them, so that's great. I did have a question for the Support for Learning at Home with the Homework, could you guys give me a little bit more on that? I wasn't quite sure how it worked.
So that was, I think that was probably more ours that you were referencing. So, we had just developed homework expectations in every single grade level to make sure that we were consistent with what we're asking kids. So, what we're doing is no more than 10 minutes multiplied by the grade. That is also rooted in some research and background, we had a teacher leader opportunity, a grant that I had gotten a couple of years ago, so had a teacher lead a committee to kind of look into what we thought would fit for us. And I think the biggest piece of it is, we were finding ourselves in conflict often with parents about homework, because we have different understandings of what homework should be, what it should be all about, we saw it reflected in our survey. Some parents think it's to teach at home, some teachers thought that, some people think kids shouldn't have any. So this is about being clear about what we see the homework expectations actually being about. We don't see homework as something that should be a parent's responsibility to be teaching things at home. We don't see homework as something that parents should be doing for their kids at home. We don't see homework as projects that parents feel pressured, they need to go buy a bunch of cotton balls and glue them to a shoebox. That's not homework in our eyes. Homework is teaching personal responsibility, and so, you know, we are hopeful that that will translate into conversations over time in talking to parents about how to slowly and, I guess, developmentally appropriately, teach your kids to be more responsible at home, you know, how to pick up their jacket, how to, you know, by fifth grade, they should be maybe getting an allowance and making their own lunch, and, you know, be responsible for getting their own backpacks, and if they leave it, then they left it, they have to pay the consequences. If they have to stand for recess for not bringing in their homework, then they have to do that. So I think we have some time still to get to that point, but that's really what it's about, in building that homeschool connection so that parents and teachers are on board with what it is that we're trying to teach kids, because we're not just trying to teach them math or reading, you know, we're also trying to teach them to be good kids that are going to be successful and can be responsible for themselves as they leave our school, so.
I like that a lot. Thank you.
So, thank you, always very thorough, very collaborative, so I appreciate this night. I just have one question and then one comment. So, related to Goal Number Three, which you guys all had, similar, the similar goal, and I think similar bullet under that goal, I was really encouraged to see beginning work to develop curriculum maps for science, so this is a hot button for me, because I'm a science geek at heart. Help me understand, because I've heard different language, I've heard unpacking standards, and now I see curriculum maps, is that one in the same thing, or have we already unpacked the standards and know what they are, and now we're navigating where to put them in curriculum, or what's that actual work?
Who wants to take it?
Okay.
The microphone's here, I'll start anyway. Well, curriculum maps are really just mapping out what you're doing when, and being clear what you want kids to know and be able to do at certain points of the year, not just following a program. So, we think curriculum maps are especially important if you have a program that you're following, because we want to be careful that we're not just running down the road of memorizing all the parts of a water cycle, but spending some time and saying, at the end of this unit, what do we really want our kids to be able to do as scientists? How do we want them to be able to think? What kinds of questions do we want them to pose? And, that just really lends itself to teaching kids to be scientists more. Unpacking the standard is like really just looking at that broader standard and picking it apart and really figuring it out in terms of what is it that we're asking kids to do? What does it mean? What are the prerequisite skills that would, kids would need in order to achieve this standard, so.
And it's also, how can we teach it interdisciplinary? Is there a way we can access this through literacy, through math? Because as you know, sciences and, especially in science and social studies, they usually don't stand alone, you know, many times you can weave in your literacy, and you're weaving in your math standards as well, so it's unpacking them to see where else can we fit this into what we're doing.
That was a really helpful clarification, I appreciate that, as being someone who's not from education. And I lied, I had one other question related to that. You mentioned, liar tonight, Discovery Ed, and I remember during the budgeting process, you guys had asked for science kits, so is that something as part of Discovery Ed?
Discovery Ed is a text, it's an online text book, and the kits are embedded within, so where, you'd be creating the kits as we go along. We can purchase separate kits, but for right now, we need to look at what's our biggest bang for our buck right now, and we need to get some content in our teachers' hands. And the hands-on, it'll come, it'll be building our kits within, so that's just, we had to make a choice there, that was basically all.
Keep in mind, as we navigate budgets and forward thinking, if Discovery doesn't have that.
I mean, we'd love to have it all, right.
No, sure, no, that's helpful.
When you have to make a decision on what our teachers and what our kids need, it's always a tough decision, but that's, we went with the text for content.
Yeah, sure, no, I appreciate that, thank you so much. And the only other comment I had, because folks touched on most things, but I really appreciated that Goal Number Four, the HBB with the homework expectations, maybe because I'm a parent, but, you know, as we talk about standards-based assessments, report cards, what does all of this stuff mean? I think just being really clear on what is the expectation of parents, students, school related to that homework, because when you just don't know, there's lots of frustration at home. So, what I appreciate is oftentimes your plans are the same, but then there's elements of test and learn in each of your buildings, and then you run something, and then you collaborate on what worked and what didn't work, and you roll it out, so I know this, yeah.
We'll be stealing that, he's still on universal screener, we'll be stealing that, yeah.
Exactly, and I see that happening, so I know those, whatever good comes out of it, you share, there's someone much smarter than me, so we don't need any more chief innovation officers, we need chief imitation officers, because there's so much good stuff going on, why does everyone have to reinvent, you know, best practice? So, I appreciate that, and you all, so, thank you.
Comments or questions?
Really, really well done, and I really appreciate the special education piece, kind of being interwoven with everything. And the town meeting, I think that's great, I think that they don't have enough time to be together as a whole group, so I really appreciate that you guys are doing that, keep that up. Thank you.
And we really appreciate it.
Now, we transition from the fifth grade to the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade school, and invite Mr. Marty Gagan down to present the John T. Nichols Junior Middle School School Improvement Plan for 2017, 2018. Down, there is one piece that I forgot to mention that I should. I want to remind the community that there is a Memorial Day Parade this Monday, and on top of that, our kids participate in it, and both the band from the middle school and the band from the high school will be a part of that, and so, please just take a few minutes out of your day on Monday morning to stop by and honor those who've lost their lives. Mr. Gagan, welcome, welcome back.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, so, I think, as it usually is, it's great to lead in from the elementary into ours, because a lot of the same things that we're working on in the elementary schools, we're working on at the Nichols, and you're going to hear a lot of the same terms and ideas. This is just a list of the parents and faculty that are on my school council, and you can't get this done without them, and I appreciate all the work that they do for us. This is just something I wrote a few years ago that I just think, really echo the statements of what we're trying to do, that this is a blueprint of what we need to do and how we're going to get there. And as a collaborative team, we figure out the ideas that form the plan, and then... And then as a team, we're going to collaboratively work together in order to make sure that it happens. And, and it really is what guides us for our PD, guides us for our practice in and out of the classrooms. Then throughout the plan, these are some of the ideas that a lot of it is, okay, you have the goal and you have the, the, the strategic plan of how to, how to, how to get there and the objectives. But then what, what's really embedded in all of this? And we as a faculty worked very hard on this plan this year. And because a lot of last year's plan was, was with the idea that we're going to be one-to-one. And how are we going to work with that? How are we going to use the, use the Chromebooks in our teaching with the students, with their learning? And it really, everything you could look at last year was embedded in that. And this year kind of took on a different spin. Because we've been in our schedule for a while. We've had digits for a while. We've had these new courses, the curriculum's kind of set. And what are we going to do now? And how are we going to get better? And these were ideas that kind of came up as I met with the faculty, met with each grade level, met with each department, met with the school, school council, and what we wanted to do. And I just kept a running list of things that we kept talking about and, and had over. And all of these made their way into our plan. And I don't, I don't mean to read at you or read at you later, but I just want you to kind of know that this is something that really is the bedrock of, of the ideas in the goals. And the first overall is that purpose-based learning. And when we have students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, kind of 11-year-olds through 15-year-olds, that they have to see a purpose in what they're learning. And that really kind of resonates through all three goals. And, and we tried to think about, okay, how can we kind of attack the things that they do outside of school and bring it into their learning? So kind of match their lives outside of school with school life. And, and need to kind of catch the students that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is so important that we feel as though each day that we come in, we have to try to catch them before they decide that school's not for them. And I know we started off tonight with the, whoa. We started off tonight with the Positive Sign Thursday. And just kind of being outside for those kids and showing them that we care about them really is just one more way to try to catch them to be in school. And one of the stories that I told the CBS reporter was that I, I have this one young lady that every single Thursday, she wants to come and stand next to me and get that picture every Thursday. And we have these couple of groups, these three boys that are in eighth grade, same thing. They always want to get their picture taken. And these two young ladies from eighth grade always want to get their picture taken. And I showed them the other day where they were the first day of school, the first week, the second week, the third week, and just how their hair styles have changed and how they've grown. And, and they loved it. And it's just one of those things that how do we grab them? How do we keep them interested? And how does the learning then take place? So we need to know how and why they need to know this and what we're teaching them and to help them to want to learn it. Innovation centers was something that a couple of years ago, we put on our, on our plan. And now you're going to see that it's really embedded in, in the plan. And we want it to be a part of not just some special place to go like the computer lab was years ago, that innovation centers are happening in the classroom. That the project isn't the final product. That it's really the project itself is the learning. And that's what you're going to hear about and see. Get kids who are tapped out of school, getting them back. Giving teachers time together for assessments and kind of sliding over on, up above it, studying data together, not in isolation, but studying it together. And seeing what we could do with each individual student with the scores that we have for them. How do we now get them to move a little bit farther? And personalized learning that we talk about, I think, in the second goal. And then trust that achievement will improve as we continue to change how we do things. That sometimes teachers are kind of, oh, well, I'm really good at this. This is really good. We've seen some really good things. If we start to change things, are we going to see, see good things continue and happen? And, and making sure that we have that trust that yes, this is important. That relationship building is super important and we will be able to get the learning to happen more. As Mr. Thompson quoted Hattie, that Hattie will say that, that the relationship with their teachers is one of the main kind of things that what will happen is that kids will score better when they like their teacher and they trust that their teachers are there for them. So it's such a big thing to build that trust. Then we have not PBL or PBL. And as I said, it's purpose-based learning. And people get all tied up into, okay, is this project-based learning? Is this not project? Everything is part of the process. Having a plan, but seeing the students as a center so that you can change it and adjust it and tweak it. That we might have had a plan, but we had to change it because everything we're doing is for the students and what we want. And then the idea of rigor, that when we think of the word rigor, it sometimes happens a lot at the high school that we talk about rigor. But it doesn't just mean more, having more problems for kids. And it doesn't always mean just more difficult problems for kids. Okay, well, you got this one, so we're going to give you this more difficult one. No, rigor means a way in which they can learn it better. And that's something that we, we talked about. Maker Spaces is again, something that were, was an outside kind of spot. Now it's embedded in there. Having kids see more connections, STEAM tying that science, technology, engineering with the arts and mathematics, connecting them all together. And then keeping the vision and mission at our center, studying data together, as I said. Not coverage and not thinking about, okay, this is the curriculum we've got to get to. No, no, no. Or get through. No, this is the things that we want the kids to learn and talk about that. And a huge piece in all the goals is really social emotional learning. And how we can kind of connect the things that they're learning with where they are that day. We all know about middle school kids. Sometimes people bless me for being a principal of a middle school. But it really is that we need to tap these kids and figure out where they are and be able to help them. And we talk about that with Life Skills for Life. That we have a chance to really grab these kids and help them figure out where they want to be later on. And if they're going to the high school, helping them to support them that this is what they need. These are the skills they need. And my last little point there is Finland. If you read a lot about education, you see that a lot of people keep pointing to Finland as, as the model for, for what it is. And we've had many good conversations in faculty meetings, PLCs, and in our school council as these are some of the things that are happening in Finland. How do we make that happen here in Middlebury? So our three main goals, to celebrate our students' academic, social growth and achievements with community recognition to promote positive outcomes. Our second goal is to continue to build stronger relationships within the school and district community to support students with social emotional challenges. And our third one is to increase student-centered learning experiences for all students through the utilization of more personalized learning strategies throughout their classes. So the first goal, as I just read, connects to our excellent new district strategic goal with the culture of excellence and especially connecting through B1 and B2. And the performance target is that we want to help our students realize that we care about their achievements and recognize that sometimes we need to measure success in different ways. We want our students to see that grit, a very big popular word right now in education, stands for growth, resilience, integrity, and tenacity in what they can accomplish. And it was a huge discussion piece with the families in the school council and with parents that sometimes, sometimes our PTA meetings can turn into a school council meeting in, in relation to the subjects we're discussing. And we talked about that we need to kind of recognize not just those students who are on the honor roll, but student growth. And how do we kind of recognize that, that student that might not be able to put it together for a full trimester or over the course of a year? But how do we kind of celebrate that student that had a good couple of weeks really turned himself around academically or behaviorally? And that's where this goal kind of centers around. So we want to utilize social media as we've done with Twitter and, and the blog and the website. And just kind of put more things on there, put more things on there that, that celebrate. And if you look at our Twitter feed or you look at our blog, it really does a nice job. But we want to do more. And we want to figure out how to get teachers involved more to, to kind of do that. So we talked about using a high school intern to become our social media kind of intern and help to kind of help us coordinate. We want to continue our ROR Awards and Tiger School Culture Initiative and different ways in which to celebrate students. Not just at the end of the month or at the end of the trimester, but more and different ways of doing it. And so we're going to form a committee that's going to be our school quote-unquote honor society. That there is a middle school National Honor Society chapter. But when we discussed it as a faculty and when we discussed it with parents, some of the things that they wanted to be about were things that we wanted to study a little bit more on growth and, and take it away from just the regulations that it was. So we want to form our own school honor society and call it and then decide what the criteria might be. So that's something we're going to do. And with that, we're going to find more ways to recognize our students more and just celebrate them. And create an honor roll committee to decide what actually is honor roll. How do we do it? And how do we make it stand and, and be something that just centers on the learning? Our second goal is to continue to build stronger relationships within the school and district community to support students with social and emotional challenges. This is connects to the culture of well-being, specifically C1 and C2. And the performance target is, in today's world, we need to help our middle school age students see the purpose for their learning and support them on where they are academically, socially, and emotionally. And we had so many great conversations as faculty, as groups in our PLCs that we want to incorporate more of a career study opportunities throughout our academic courses in the school year. And it was hilarious because Mr. Branigan presented to our PTA last month. And so many of the ideas that he's going to come up and speak about are, go right in line with what we're doing. So we're, we're talking the same language as the high schools talk about. Is having them see those connections in the real world and know that what they're doing today really does mean something. It's not just, okay, I'm going to learn algebra because I got to go to Algebra II. No, no, no. We're going to learn math because you need math. You have to have it. And this is where it's going to help you. And, and try to connect more with the, with the community and businesses and bring them in to kind of help us to show how careers are important and how education is their key to get there. We're going to develop a guidance curriculum to be studied by all students where each student takes a class once a year through their dial block to get to know their guidance counselor. Sometimes some of our kids get through three years and they never really saw who their guidance counselor was. And they just think of it as, oh, that's somebody that needs help. And I, I didn't need help. I was able to get through. We want to be able to kind of show them that there's, there's people here that are there to support you, there to help you. And we're going to create that curriculum to kind of key in on the things that we know as sixth graders, they need to know and they need help with. And when, when they're in seventh grade, they need kind of introductions to these types of ideas. And then when they're in eighth grade, okay, now you're going to make this big decision about high school. We're going to help them and support them a little bit more. We do have the schools come in and do an excellent job on explaining it. But just in a smaller group setting for them to be able to ask these questions and understand it and, and key in on things that we know they need socially and emotionally. Study to incorporate a more organized positive behavioral intervention and support system. This is something Carolyn Lyons and Jen Castatina are facilitator. We have had many discussions about how we're going to be able to do this. How we're going to have a behavioral support system in place in school that's across all grades, all teams, and can kind of be building-based. So that they understand. They do great work at the elementary school. And, and we need to kind of carry some of those ideas over. And, and some of them might sound elementary, but we need some of that in, in middle school. And we need to kind of make that transition a little bit better. Begin a more formalized student mentor-mentee structure within, across, and vertically with students in the district. Some of our eighth graders love the idea of working with seventh and sixth graders. And we have the chances in dials. Not every single dial, not every single day. But we have chances that we can kind of utilize this because kids sometimes want to sit with other kids and learn from other kids. And the best way to learn something is to teach it. So we're going to have a win-win situation with that. So that's something we're going to, as it says, a more formalized system for it. And then our third goal is to continue to make our curriculum instruction and assessment a more personalized individual exploration where the students are at the center of their own learning in all courses and classes. We've done book studies the last three years. And all of them have kind of centered around the idea of that the students are the center of their own learning and they're the leaders of their own learning. And Alan November, who presented last September, who, who's doing the learning? Who's, who's at the learning? And this is all about the students and making sure they're there. So this, of course, ties with our culture of innovation and achievement, A1, A2, and A3. And, and this is something our performance target has been there for the last few years. It's just wording has changed over the last four years. But it really is to instruct for 21st century learning with a more personalized view in conjunction with implementing the standards to have our students see that education is boundless and not limited to classrooms, textbooks, schedules, brick and mortar as we make them better and more creative communicators, collaborators, and critical thinking thinkers within our one-to-one Chromebook environment. And with that, we want to develop a portfolio system that, that's online to track the learning, growth, and goals for all students of personal work to be collected from academic courses during trimesters. And then at the end of each school year, that will eventually be a three, and this is going to be something that Paul's going to mention too, for the high school, that now that we have these, this ability with the, with the Chromebook, that we got to take advantage of this. And all the student work is in there for them in their Google Drive. And for them to just pick out and reflect upon pieces, put them all together and show what they learned, what was important, and connect it all together. We want to do more, formalize, having students develop academic and social goals. And in sixth grade, it's kind of thinking more smaller goals and over a shorter period of time. Whereas in seventh grade and eighth grade is looking not only towards that trimester or for that year, but also looking more towards the future. Where do you want to be? How are we going to get there? What are the steps that you need to? And that connects back to our career in, in school goal two, where we're going to have those people presenting about different careers. Then they're going to see how these goals make sense to them and how it all connects. And keep it in our Google Drive. And then continue to utilize our one-to-one Chromebook environment to improve learning through more advanced usage of the Chromebooks within the Google Suite of apps and other web-based resources. And we've done a sensational job of PD, everything kind of centered around the teaching and learning with the Chromebooks. The kids, the students, the teachers have been awesome about learning new things and incorporating it each day. And we want to just, we want it to continue to be in here in our school improvement plan that we know we need to continue to do it. And then we want to continue our development of our dial blocks to better integrate personalized learning. Big part of that culture of innovation and achievement for this district strategic goal is that how do we personalize the learning? How do we figure out, okay, we have this data point, whether it's through our Scantron testing, whether it's through some of our common assessments and through digits, or it's through the MCAS. Okay, we have all these things, but now how do we dig down deeper to see how that data point teaches us what we need to do to help that student on a specific standard? And so that continues to be a part of our goals. And develop, study, and utilize initial and ongoing assessments and growth with Scantron. And then, as I said, we want to incorporate more maker spaces and Genius Hour ideas into the classes. And not just be the separate outside thing that, okay, you're going to go to the library, as we said last year, the library is going to be the place where we're going to set up a maker space. No, we want maker spaces to be a part of the classroom, be a part of a unit that they're studying in ELA that connects with math or social studies. And those are my goals.
I'll start with comments if that's okay. One thing that you said probably concerned me more than anything else, and that was the comment that you made about some children's belief that they could go three years without guidance, you know, sort of not participating in the guidance process. And I guess I want to find a way, in my mind, a child should meet with their guidance counselor once a year, in a minimum circumstance, and making sure that that's going on in some way, shape, or form because, you know, as they progress to eighth grade, guidance becomes, where do you go next year? What opportunities are open to you? And then even moving on to ninth grade, then guidance, you have to have that relationship with guidance as you move up to be able to make lots of different choices. And so that was a piece that stuck out to me, and I would hope that we are able to find a way.
That's the exact reason why we decided we're going to build a class, because Ms. Buren and Ms. Kreditor do a phenomenal job. And when we were a school of 900 kids, it was 450 about per, and they thought they had the different areas and arenas to get to them, but they said, you know what, we need to get it even more to a smaller group. And it's what parents even talked about because in our school council or on the PTA, that some of those kids, they go through school, they can do school, they know how to do it, and they weren't the ones that always kind of maybe thought of themselves as needing that guidance. But yet, it would be awesome if we had it, and that's why we use the word "develop it." Develop it, and the word I kept using was "formalize," that it needs to be more formal so that they definitely have that chance. And Mrs. Buren and Mrs. Kreditor both said that this would be an awesome opportunity for them to do so because they wanted to get the chance to work on things that maybe they're doing with small groups or maybe they're doing with specific students, but they want to be able to make sure that they do it for all. And it is something that, as you just said, that was something that when we sat and heard parents say, you know, my child said that they never really quote unquote got to know them. And, I mean, I could tell you right now that Ms. Buren could sit here and name every single student in the school, she's that great, but.
But it's the perception.
It is, exactly. So that is something that, as we saw, this is a need, this is something we want to do, this is something that we want to make better.
The other question I had for you, as we move, you know, we're moving into a culture of one-on-one devices and things like that. I just was wondering from reading that piece, having the devices and having them in the classroom and having them part of classroom, have we lost in any way, shape, or form sort of the group dynamic? You know, with children on their devices, especially at home, you don't, you know, you want them to get off and go out and play. But, you know, using them in school, making sure that there is an emphasis based on the group dynamic.
Absolutely, absolutely. A lot of the times, what the device enables us to do is have more group work, which sounds kind of counterintuitive, but yet it really does enable us to help the students to work together more. And Google is perfect for it because when all of a sudden I'm writing a paper with another student, we're being able to comment back and forth to each other when we don't have to be sitting right there. But then when we get back to the class, we're building that project out a little bit better and we're integrating more. And the devices, you can, and I try to take pictures a lot and I try to tweet them out a lot as I'm walking through classrooms, is that you can see that, yeah, a lot of our classes take advantage of having it, but yet it's not every second of every day are they sitting in front of a screen. And it is something that we are cognizant of and want to make sure that we're using it in the right way.
And the last question I have too is, I agree with the community involvement more than anything else because the more we involve the community, the more they understand what goes on and have a better idea of how they can help. I really think maybe one of the ideas that we need to look at is the easiest pieces become community businesses that deal with youth, and that we try to figure a way that they can come in and meet the youth, even if they're running after-school activities or summer activities, but, you know, and then offering their services outside of that afterwards. But, you know, it's that mix where they start off here and they provide us a service as much as meet people who could work for them, and it may be a perfect fit. I mean, we know, for example, that there are kids here who are gifted in the arts, but they can't take arts all the time because that's not what the curriculum allows us. And so opening up opportunities to them outside of here is going to help them develop and help them grow just as much as whatever goes on here, as you know.
Yeah, we, just next Friday, we have our STEAM Fair and our after-school, and we have already had a few companies that are going to come in, different people, to kind of demonstrate how they use the ideas of STEAM, but STEM, and how it's kind of changed the way they've done their work and for them to kind of show. And I know we have made contact with Ocean Spray, a couple smaller companies, I wish I knew the names off just to give them some publicity right now, but they're going to come in and they're going to show it. And I think we need to take more advantage of that, and we need to kind of tap those people to, because it's a win-win for everybody that people get to present in front of kids and see their excitement for it, and then we get to see for our kids that this is something that's helpful for them.
Ms. Jeanette.
Yes, I just had a couple of questions. Could you talk a little bit more about the Honor Society you want to put together? Is that more for like struggling students, kind of developing something for them or?
That was what, when we discussed how we want to, in that first goal, celebrate students' academic and social growth, we didn't just want it to be the honor, you're got an honor roll. And we said, we want it to be more often, more different ways that they could be quote-unquote honored. And so the discussion became a huge discussion that, okay, we need a committee to kind of decide on, okay, this is going to be what our Nichols Middle School quote-unquote Honor Society, and we can call it something, and we'll probably connect it to the idea of Tiger, and how it all kind of links together. But the best example I can give is that there, we have Tiger Stripes that we give out to kids each day, that they did something, that teachers saw them do something over the Tiger, and each of the letters stands for something. So their name gets put in, they get a Tiger band. But we said, okay, that's one thing, that's nice, but how do we kind of stretch it out? And as you just kind of referenced, how is it more that a kid kind of strung together a couple good weeks? Maybe they were absent every once in a while, and now all of a sudden they were here for 10 straight days. How do we talk about that? They didn't have any tardies over 10 straight days. And so we want to form a committee that discusses that and starts to build it out, that these are some of the criteria that we're going to use to call ourselves an Honor Society and not just use what's out there as the National Honor Society and not just tied, directly connected to grades and academics and how that looks at the end of a trimester. Kids get high honors, kids get regular honors. We wanted to decide, these are the things that we want to honor and celebrate for kids.
Great, I think that's really.
Thank you.
Really good, thank you. And could you just talk a little bit more about the dial block? I'm just not familiar with.
Sure.
What goes on then?
Dial block is something we created four years ago when we started our new schedule. And it's called, the letter stands for differentiated instruction and learning. And what we wanted it to be is a catch-all, that if we have kids that need to make something up, this is their time when they can do it, if they couldn't stay after school. We wanted to use it for remediation, that a child was having a hard time in math class first block, so before they even get home and start to struggle, as Mr. Thompson said, with the homework, what can we do to kind of put something in place? So we have this dial block three out of the seven days where they could then go on their team, go to their math teacher and say, I had a really tough time this morning in math. Could you maybe help me out with that? And it might be a five to 10-minute mini lesson that the teacher ends up doing with four or five other kids that he saw or she saw that were struggling as well. And it's a catch-all to try to help and support kids, and it's also a place where we can do enrichment and some other activities that kind of extend the learning. So we're thinking about, each year we've kept kind of taking the dial block, and it meant something different for each team and different teachers. We want to keep advancing it and making it more and thinking about, okay, maybe we could one time a month during a cycle that we're going to, they're going to take a guidance class. One time a month, they're going to end up studying something that deals with careers or take the career inventory and maybe use that as a way to help them with their goals. We've used it before with learning what growth mindset means. All those types of ideas kind of get packed into this magical period that we call dial, but we do want to use it as a way to just kind of help the kids.
Great, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I really liked the idea of the horizontal and vertical kind of support for the kids. I think that's really important so they have some mentors they can look up to and kind of follow.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Furthermore, on the dial block, is like every teacher off at that time so a kid can go to any teacher they want to for work?
In the grade level, yes.
Oh, that's, I like that.
Thank you.
It's really good. Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ginn, thank you. Nice job on the plan. On goal number three, you talk about the Chromebooks being used, more advanced usage, okay? So can you talk a little bit more about how that goal, how that part of that goal is going to work? And what are you going to use?
Sure. And a lot of times, because we think about the school improvement plan is something that's supposed to guide us by budget and also guide us for professional development. And so when discussing this with teachers, they said, just because this year is over and just because this year has been very successful with the Chromebooks, we still want to keep advancing our knowledge of it, and we still want to keep getting better. Because I have a mix of teachers here in this building that are expert at Google Classroom and some that have just kind of dipped their toe in it and are getting used to it and knowing about it. So they didn't want us to forget about it and say, okay, that was this year's goal and now next year's goal, we're going to deal with all these things. We just kept talking about, it's been great, we love it, we're doing a great job with it, but we still want it to stay in the improvement plan because we want to keep getting better. And that's where that whole idea was based, is that we do use them really, really well, and the teachers are using them well, and they're helping the students to learn a little bit better, but we just didn't want it to become, okay, that was last year's thing was the Chromebooks, and now this year we're talking social, emotional, and all the other things that we've tied into this goal or these three goals, that we want to make sure that we continue our work with it and know that there might be a few PD days that we want to touch back on, on where we are with technology and the teaching of it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation this evening.
You're welcome.
One of the items that you, we talked about, the Honor Society, the Honor Roll, Honor Society piece, and I'm glad that it's being, a committee's looking at this because one of my concerns of these types of programs is it turns into the, what we call the participation trophy. And unfortunately, it's gone full circle now, and I have had discussion with the kids that have graduated in 2001, 2002, 2003, and they're reality-based and they're saying, wow, everyone doesn't get a trophy. And they blame it on us, the parents that were giving out these trophies. And I said, wait a minute. That's, the whole thinking back then was that way, so I'm glad they're going to really give some thought to this because we should be rewarding not just academic excellence, but excellence overall, growth overall, and really rewarding that work. And, you know, when I look at the flyer for the district-wide K-12 art exhibit that's happening tomorrow at the high school between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m., and it says right at the bottom, "The object of the young artist of Middleborough is to showcase the most successful pieces of art that have been created by the students within the Visual Arts Program of Middleborough Public Schools because of this not every student may have an artwork on display." And that is, I remember the art show that used to be at the town hall, every student had at least one piece of art there. And I'm not saying it wasn't great and beautiful, but the idea is you're really showcasing the best work, and you're rewarding it by putting it on display. And when we have these programs, I think about that and I say, that's great that we really need to look at that, those students individually that are really achieving and working hard, working hard, growing. Throughout this entire night, all I keep thinking about is Anita Rodriguez talking about the whole child, the whole child. And I've heard it all tonight, and I'm sure Paul's going to be talking about it too. And I saw it in your presentation, and I think about that and that growth of that child. Every child has that level of achievement that they will achieve. So I'm glad that people are looking at that. The other thing I really liked to see is this portfolio piece coming in. Paul talked about it in the last year, the Naviance, you're talking about it now, the sooner the better. As a professional, I have to keep a portfolio for everything I do as an engineer. So, and I didn't learn that skill till after I graduated college, and I realized, oh my God, the state's going to make me send in an inch of material to get my stamp as a professional engineer. So I love that you're doing it now because it's going to carry through in everything that they do, and between you and Paul working together and, like you said, borrowing, stealing, whatever you want to do, if it works, you do it, like your program you talked about earlier today. So I appreciate what you've done. And like I said, that piece of the whole child, I've been hearing it all night, and no one said it, but all I keep thinking of is Anita's comment about the whole child. So I appreciate your work on this, and I appreciate the work of all the parents and the teaching staff that came in on this too.
Thank you.
Related to that, Brian, too. You know, we take great pride at the high school level with the idea of AP, being open to all. And, you know, as Paul knows, we've had to sit and defend that in front of the state for them to understand why we do that. And so I really think we need to find a way to open certain aspects of middle school life to those same kids because we've seen kids grow in different ways in the high school. I know kids who've taken AP that I never would have expected to have done well, but the challenge made their lives and turned them around, and it was important. And so to start that on the path here makes absolute sense. Ms. Frank.
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you for your time and your presentation and sharing this with us tonight. I actually don't have any questions, shocking, I just have a comment. Under goal number two, I was really encouraged to see, I think it's your third bullet, to really study and incorporate a more organized, positive behavioral intervention and support system. Appreciate that. I know, you know, that was discussed, I think, over the past year or so, some different things that have come up, so it was really refreshing to see that in your plan moving forward, and I look forward to kind of seeing what you guys come up with there. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
We transition from middle school to high school.
There's one thing I want to say because we'll have a few minutes while Mr. Brannigan sets up. As we're sitting here thinking, there is one piece that I want to do differently this coming year. We spend time at some point in the mid-year looking at where the school improvement plans are. So, but what I'm going to do differently this year is I'm going to sign a school committee member to each of the school improvement plans, and what I'd like to do is have them report back on what you want to hear, in the sense that what ideas on the school improvement plan really met your eye, and let's see where people are at at that point, and take a look at how we've come. So I think it's different, but I think it will be fun. And Mr. Brannigan, I hope you don't mind that, but I figured while you're logging.
There it is, it worked. Good evening, everyone. It is really with a great deal of excitement to be here tonight to present to you the high school improvement plan for next year. And a few months ago, when you asked us to come to give us, to give you updates about where we were at, I had shared with you that when you saw our improvement plan, it was going to look very different than what you have seen in the past from us. And that really became a revelation when we started last fall with our school council beginning the process of assessing where we were at and looking at really where we wanted our goals to go. And we realized the fact that over the five years that our improvement plan had been an evolution, that we realized we had met many of the goals that were in it. So it really became an opportunity for us to look at what we, where we wanted to take the building now. And then furthermore, what really became a kind of a piece of evidence that we didn't realize was going to be evidence was an education plan you were writing for a potential new high school, because you were realizing. Because you were realizing the fact of some of the things that you were writing about were things that you needed to start implementing now and start really looking at some avenues for our students, that it's really about all students as well. So, I hope you'll see that come through tonight in just some of our goals for next year. Just really a thank you to the members of the committee, who, their names are up there for you, from the students to the faculty members and of course, to the many parents that serve on our committee. I just have the overarching goals, as you've seen through all of the plans, and one of the things that we did is we went back after, we really vetted these goals for the district through our goals for the school and made sure the fact that this was what we really believed and to ensure the fact that the goals for the high school were gonna really complement, really creating a culture of innovation and achievement, excellence and well-being. One of the goals that we kept exactly the same, in terms of its title, is leveling. We were really adamant about making sure the fact that now that we have really worked through, looking at how we level our students and looking at our college preparatory program, looking at our honors program, and really now that we have curriculum in place, which we had not had in place for, for quite some time, that it was really about making sure the fact that we are monitoring our leveling practices. When we say college preparatory, what does that mean? When we say honors, what does that mean? When you're looking at standards, it's the same content that you're teaching, but how are you teaching it? So, it really was a function for us to really look at how we're reviewing our core expectations in every content area in the school. And it's also really looking at the pedagogy over time. One of the goals for next year is to really be charting the course, really what are we seeing in grade nine in particular, as we're evolving our students from the day they walk in the door to the time that they leave. And then the scaffolding that takes place after that, when they go into grades 10, 11 and 12 and beyond. So, you'll notice the fact that in the improvement plan, it really looks at, look, really taking a, an assessment collaboratively with all of our content areas of really what is leveling and really what are we doing? When we say college preparatory, what does that mean? Because it's also providing them the skills base they need for, for life beyond a college experience as well, and that was important for us as a school. You'll also notice the revision of the freshman academy. When we gave, when we created this, this program at the high school, it was really without the technology that you see in front of all of you as well. So, you were looking at ring binders and you were looking at real paper products that you were creating. So, even though you were creating the protocols, you needed to carry around these binders with you no matter where you went. Now, with our one-to-one initiative, it was important for us to go back and really take a good, hard look at really what are we doing with our ninth graders and what is that academy look like now? Because it's transformed the school with that one-to-one. Also, with the Project Success Program, that we have found some really great successes this year with that program. It really now you have a very, you have an onset of a very different-looking schedule as well and the engagement of ninth grade. So, that is something that we're looking at as well, of what does that ninth grade experience look like across the board, no matter what level you're in, college prep and, or honors as well. And really, one of the things we're most excited by is the infusion of the literacy plan. I'll always be one to admit mistakes when they happen. And when we started our school year, we thought that really one-size-fits-all in terms of literacy. And as we went through this year, we realized that literacy looks very different depending upon what you're teaching and when you're teaching it and how you're teaching it. And if we really believe that literacy is the cornerstone of everything that we do, then really literacy could look very different in a math class than how it's gonna look at English. So, our evolution this year as a school has really been quite exciting of watching a group of teachers who at the beginning pushed back on a plan because it was really forcing them into, you know, the round hole, the, the round peg into a square hole potentially and really evolving us to become a school that really looks at, well, what does literacy mean to us? So, you're gonna notice in the leveling, leveling practices that our hope is, is that when you see the accountability plan that will come before you in, in next month, it really has the identity of what literacy is, but from the viewpoint of really what the content areas are. So, those transferable skills will still be taking place, but in a very, very different light as well. In curriculum, this was something that the school council felt needed to remain in place, obviously, because it is a living, breathing document. And albeit the fact that we will continue to create, revise our standards-based curriculum in all content areas, it was important for us to really be looking at actually, well, now that we have the curriculum in place, well, what are we doing with that? So, you'll notice the fact, the implementation of completed curriculum, we are still rolling out in all of the content areas, the understanding by design, stage three, we have areas still that are still in stage two. We've had content areas go back because they weren't happy with what they had created and they really found that there was a different entry point, which I thought was an important part to mention because I don't want it to just be a canned document to say we've done it. Because they need to live it and the students have to learn it. So, it was important for us to make sure that that was really celebrated when they realized the fact, I think we need to go back to the drawing board with something as well. We do need to go and look at our formal review of textbooks and resources, and that is something that is a critical need. And not saying the fact that we need to replace every single textbook in a school, but when you are using books that sometimes are outdated to some degree, you do need to go back and look at that. But it's also really taking a cultural shift as well. What does a textbook mean to us? Is it really that hard copy book? Or is it something you can have electronically as well? Or is it a hybrid of that? Curriculum renewal, it's a living document. And one of the goals for this year is really for the high school, is to really make sure the fact that every year, we're going back and looking at our curriculum, what does it mean to us and what does that say? And then really, what changes do we need to do? Literacy and the 21st century learning expectations, you'll see in the upcoming slides, the fact that those become two of our, our goals in, in, in particular. And we need to make sure the fact that in every curriculum document that is being written, it is a true focus on the pillars of literacy, as well as the revision of our 21st century learning expectations. If you have a curriculum that doesn't complement a 21st century learning approach, you're never going to get the students where you want them to be. And lastly, which is something that was kind of an exciting part for our school council, but I also think it really would help with the celebration of the curriculum that is written. Back in my days as a department chair, we used to have curriculum on the wall, which means the fact that we had it really publicized, really what we were doing on a monthly basis. And there's been some conversations about really, well, what does that mean in a greater school? And how can we take an understanding by design unit and really just have it on a monthly basis, say, these are the topics we're covering, these are the standards that we're looking at? How do we communicate that to a community and to parents and guardians to say, this is what your student is doing from the time they walk in the building in September to the time they leave in June as well? And we just call it the cow, is curriculum on the wall. In terms of literacy, the, the big three essentials you see is curriculum, instruction and assessment. And that when we, when we vetted this document this year, those three items became really the essential ingredients for all of our goals this year. And then in our literacy plan for, you will see, and especially in the improvement plan for this year, we broke the goals into three areas of looking at curriculum, instruction and assessment. And really, if you notice the fact, the engagement of literacy in all classrooms evidenced by the curriculum and instructional practices, no matter where you are in our building. And you will see that when you, when you have an opportunity to review the accountability plan. You also, in instruction, literacy objectives, one of the things we need to make sure we're doing is transferring the skills from one classroom to another at the high school. Because if they can't transfer the skill that they're learning, I can explain something in math, it may be looking very different to explain something in English. And those literacy objectives are being homegrown by our content areas. So, when you were to walk into a classroom in the fall, the goal is, we hope, is the fact that in every classroom, you would see an objective that would be posted in some way, shape or form, whether electronically in a Google Classroom or actually on the board proper, that it would actually be the goal that they're gonna say, this is the literacy skill that we want you to engage in this particular lesson. And then lastly, with assessment, we really wanted to make sure that we, as a faculty, need to go back and look at how we assess, what the assessments tell us, how do we report the assessments to students, to parents, to the community? And how do we use it to actually grow our school even more? And we want to make sure that as we're assessing students, are we assessing based on content, which is important, but we also want them to understand actually, can they speak effectively? Can they communicate? Can they write? Can they read? And that's all part of those assessments that we're hoping that will be kind of a lens put on it as well to say, how were we doing it? And are we really hitting the targets that we want to? And that literacy plan is something that I had shared with the committee last summer and that the, the pillars of that are still in place, it's just really the essence and the, and the navigation of it are changing a little bit. What we're really excited by is our 21st century learning goals this year. And that we created this goal, really because we were hoping and to see, really, how do we take our learning expectations and really bring them to life? The one thing that we're really excited by and we actually have presented it to the faculty is the archive project, which will launch in the fall with the class of 2021. And that starting in the ninth grade, our students will have to own those 21st century learning expectations. And how are they a 21st century learner and how are they becoming a 21st century citizen? And the goal is, over their four years of high school, using online experiences like Google, they will be collecting their story. It will be in their academic experiences, their activities, their athletics, their service work, it could be anywhere that is defining them as a 21st century learner. The goal is, when this class becomes seniors, they will actually report out how they are a 21st century learner as kind of a capstone, where they will be sharing that information out to the community. Also, a complete revision of our school-wide learning rubrics. In a Reader's Digest, if you go back before our NIES visit in 2013, we were doing a lot of quick action of getting, making sure we had things in place. The rubrics that we had have done our, its job for us for the last four, five, six years, but now it's time to really be looking at those rubrics really doing what we want them to do. If we're saying we have 21st century learning expectations, if we say we have school-wide rubrics, how are we using them? And furthermore, how are students engaging with them as well? At a high school level, the students need to own it and they need to know it and they need to be able to express it. You will find in the fall that we're going to, we're completely revising all of our rubrics to do what is called a one-point rubric. Because in a regular rubric, you'll have four points to it. And you'll have the four points, which is exemplary, all the way down to I did nothing. And if we really want students to be able to raise the bar, that one-point rubric in the middle becomes really, what is our expectation? We want them to be in that four, we want them to be able to be an effective learner or communicator or collaborator. And then basically, on the other sides of that rubric, it becomes an opportunity for them to say, where do I see myself in this? Where do I need to grow to be better? And on the other side, it allows for the conversation for the, for the teacher to be able to say, this is what I see in you and this is where we want you to go. So, that is something you'll be seeing on the, in the onset in the fall. And really, the continuing of our one-to-one implementation that you will see there too. And one of the things that is there is really a, the 21st century learning conference, which we're really excited by, and Mr. Gagan had referenced it in his presentation as well. Starting in the fall, we will be hosting two sessions, one in the fall and one in the spring, of a few, of a true conference for students, where our students will go through a day and experience 21st century learning. And the title of it this year that our faculty came up with is Surviving in a 21st Century World. Our students will be picking workshops that will be partnered with faculty members and community members, business people, community leaders, to be able to come in and teach something about living in a 21st century world. And it could be very different than what they're learning in a classroom to say about a war or about a, a science or mathematical standard, it's really about how do you live in the world that you're gonna be entering very, very shortly? And it will be a full conference and we'll have the culture of that, students will sign up for workshops ahead of time. And we're really gonna try to create the culture of, of that professional attitude you would have at any conference any of us would go to as well. Guidance and counseling. If you were to look in our school improvement plan, you're gonna find that this is a pretty extensive goal for this upcoming year. And it needs to be. We are making a pretty significant shift at the high school, no longer calling our guidance department a guidance department, we're making the shift to a school counseling department. It is gonna become much more universal, it is gonna become much more engaging, and it's gonna become much more comprehensive, because that is the trends you will find in any public high school in America, is that you no longer really hear the word guidance anymore, it's school counselors, because they do everything. And it's not just getting them to get to college, it's getting them to make sure they're in a career or whatever their next steps are. You will notice the fact, we are hoping to have a complete revamping and an engagement of a different sort with our families in regards to college preparation. And not just the one night in the fall or the spring to say, this is what you need to do, but really a series of opportunities for parents to come in, especially parents of different grades. Because a 10th grade parent engaging in college readiness is very different than the senior getting ready for college readiness. So, it's important for us to make sure the fact that we're engaging parents in different ways. The career exploration, really, I have to be quite candid, came out of our education plan for the high school. The career exploration program is that we're in the process now of identifying a career of the week. And that starting in the fall, that every week we'll be identifying a different career, whether they need to have a college degree or not. And that will be really sharing out with students what you need to do to have this kind of career. And then on Fridays, we're gonna call them future Fridays, and that every Friday during lunchtime, students can come up to the library with their lunch and actually have a career specialist in that field come in and talk about what they do, how they got there and what they do for a living and their experiences of such. Part of that career exploration and college piece as well is an engagement with our alumni. Starting this summer, we'll be launching an online media campaign to be able to engage alumni from all ages and all, all graduation years of people who want to serve as a mentor to our students. It could be in career, it could be, I want to go to college to become a teacher and play collegiate sports, I want to have some, I have some questions for you. And for any alumni that wants to be a part of that, all they will do is fill out a very simple Google form to capture their information. And then we then now have a database to be able to partner alumni with our current students to be able to allow them to experience any sort of career opportunity beyond compare. The personalization piece, you will notice the fact that is something we have every year because it is a continual work in our department to make sure guidance, the guidance counselors, or now called school counselors, will be engaging with students. We are gonna be launching this year a Google Classroom for every guidance counselor. And that each counselor is gonna ensure the fact that they have the means to be able to create an engagement on a continual basis, just like a teacher would in a classroom. So, if you're looking to figuring out ways of sharing opportunities or reminders about things, we're gonna try to launch this through Google Classroom and to have every counselor have that. The furthering of Naviance, I can tell you that the data entry that the guidance counselors have been doing this year has been incredible because that program just really does some wonderful things to be able to chart where our students are going, and that is an area that we're continually growing. And you've just noticed the continuation of our advisory program, our community outreach programs, especially the complete revision of our internship program as well. That has become really something that we've been working at to make sure that our seniors are celebrating where they're going and what they've accomplished, but also bringing back all of these community partners to really celebrate what these students have done. A new goal that was really important for our school is really a culture of well-being and our wellness goal. We have created a full program at the high school that has been kind of really, it's in the creation mode now of a formal program that will be called Wellness Strong. There will be two prongs to it, our student-centered approach and faculty approach, because we need to be mindful of wellness for not only our students, but also for our staff, our faculty and staff. And that you will find in the upcoming year that we're hoping to have monthly, monthly topics. It could be suicide prevention, it could be drug and alcohol prevention, it could be mindset and mindfulness and healthy living, it could be anything. And we're trying to align it with very big initiatives that happen nationally to make sure the fact that we can capture the moment for kids to create conversations in the building about really what does it mean to have a healthy lifestyle and what does it mean to be able to support each other? And the goal is to come, to celebrate this program is two weeks in the year that will be called the Wellness Week, at a very critical time in the fall semester and a critical time in the spring semester. And it'll be things like, for example, maybe there would be a weekend that there is absolutely no activity at all. There is no homework, there is no emails and the entire school shuts it down. And the ability for us to be able to do that collectively as a school. So, we're really excited to bring forward to you over the next couple of months, really what Wellness Strong will look like, but that is really a goal for us to be able to create this year. The Futures Program, thanks to the good work of Mr. Porter and his staff, we're launching that four-year program, we will be doing the transition work this year. But I have to tell you quite candidly, the fact that when you see in this improvement plan, that you have a, and a program that is really looking at high-stakes assessment, they're looking at assessment and aligning the fact to make sure that their assessments are aligning with the mainstream, that has become a very, very different program and it's really a testament to the, to the work and the culture of excellence that is being provided in that program. And really, again, that college and career exploration. We have students this year that are graduating from the Futures Program that are going to Massasoit in the fall, and that's exactly the goal that we wanted to achieve. And the last two goals are really things that you will see that we've had in our NIES report. We have a major milestone coming up in March of next year, as our five-year report is due, providing the professional development, making sure the fact that our, our many recommendations are being met. And that if there's anything that we're not doing, or we have an area that's a hole, we need to make sure that we're addressing that through the professional development that we may need to do. The last two pieces that are there, the core values and beliefs and community service. As you know, the community service requirement is in place. We have another grade entering the school in the fall. We've been able to create a schedule for a teacher that she will have a day, a block every other day to really dedicate to the fostering of service work and the data management that goes along with it, as well as the community engagement to figure out what areas could we be engaging in the community about getting our students involved. And then lastly, the core values and beliefs, we have to make sure we begin the process of really what we're living by, is it truly what we're living by? And do we need to begin that process again? And lastly, just, we want to keep this on our radar at all times. It's just really the look at the facility, and making sure the fact that we're continuing the good work of the feasibility study, as well as making sure that we're keeping the energy into the current facility as well, because we have a lot of students who'll be going through that building over the next many years. One thing just for you to know, as part of our school counseling launch, we're hopeful this summer to be able to actually create a counseling center and take our two adjustment counselors, and actually have them share an office space with a lobby area that can be really a collaborative space, and really, an opportunity for students to have a center to be able to go. And that's all part of that, looking at what you have, and how can you create it to make it better for students as well. And lastly, just, our whole mantra this year has been about a climb. When you launched the one-to-one, you had a lot of us that really had no idea how to engage that. And as part of our goal of a no-fail zone this year, it really became a year of taking risks. If we want our students to do it, we as staff have to do it as well. And that every week in our memo, the fact that there'd always be a graphic about a mountain or about a climb, to get, to make sure, making sure that we're fostering that approach with our, our staff about it really is, maybe we may think it's impossible, but we'll get there as well. So I can take any questions. Thank you.
Paul, I actually have a couple of questions. First of all, this year, I, I know community service applies to, for example, the honor societies and everything like that before. But this was the first year where the freshman class were required. I was wondering how that went? And were there any bumps along the road, or anything like that, that made you reassess some of it?
Yeah, no, I, thank you for the question. There really wasn't any, the bumps in the road were just more logistical of trying to get that up and running, and how are you going to manage that? And making sure the students know where they can get the forms, then get things approved. And clearing up any misperception, that if there's a school-wide activity, if they're involved in a club or organization, a sports team, and there's a service opportunity in those organizations, it automatically counts as their service hours. And they needed to kind of, kind of alleviate some of that confusion, that they didn't have to have every item approved. If a sports team is doing a field cleanup, then we know the fact that those could be hours that they could accrue. We did make the decision this year not to add on more hours, that we kept it as the 24 hours, because we wanted to make sure we were kind of monitoring the process and we weren't getting ahead of ourselves, and then have it be something that we, for saying it's a graduation inquiry, we need to make sure that we own it, and that we can do it and do it right. So, so we're excited by the ninth graders coming up to continue that program.
The other thing that I heard from some of the students, and I'll raise with you, is I, I think the one-on-one has been a huge hit. There's also been some, I've heard feedback from students to say, hey, will we be able to take the devices home during the summer? Because we think it would help with, you know, things that are outlined beforehand, especially for classes. And so I was wondering about that.
The principals' roundtable actually brought that up, and I, I always have to do the good homework of when they bring up their report card, I have to go back the next month with the responses of that report card. And that was one of the items that they had brought up. And in working with the technology department, this year and this year only is the one year that they can't, because there's a major update that needs to be done in all of those laptops. That if they allow the students to hold on to them all summer long, there's a chance that they're not going to get them, it won't be a guarantee they'd have them in hands for day one. And that really needs to happen, that they have them day one. Now, as we move forward for like, summer of 18, that could actually be quite a possibility for students to be able to do that. They were hoping they could try to figure out a way of doing it, even if we had a deadline, say August 15th, you need to return your laptop. There just wasn't the guarantee, there could be the turnaround because of the significant updates that needed to be done.
And I also thought that was great, it came from them. You know, that was their idea and their belief that would help them with the schoolwork and, and the things they're supposed to do over the summer. So that's what I had, and thank you, Paul. Again, a fantastic job. Anyone else? Mr. Stevens?
Couple of comments, Mr. Brannigan. First of all, that was a great report, thank you. I really liked the health and wellness. And what I really appreciated was that you're now looking at a student, but a staff, because I think, being a teacher, I can certainly understand that. Staff should be taken care of, too, in that regard. But another issue that I had heard, and this is more anecdotal, so I'm not sure, but somebody was telling me that the freshman class, they were having a lot of trouble with the one-to-one laptops, like they weren't working right. And a lot of students were buying their own laptop. Have you heard anything about that?
No, they were, at the beginning, when the launch happened, that you were launching all of them pretty much at the same time. So once we were able to work out some of the kinks of just some of the, in the new devices, there was something on the backside, and I'm going to talk like I really know what I'm talking about technologically, so bear with me on that. But there was something on the backside of those computers that was really, the new machines for the ninth and 10th graders were, were kind of creating some problematic situations for them. They weren't starting up, or they would shut down. And once we were able to work out those bugs at the beginning of it, it has been much better. There has been some students who have opted to trans, to turn in their device and bring their own, because they might have gotten their own laptop and they wanted to use it. And now that we have the BYOD, that they can actually look into our own, into our network, they were able to do that. They would register it and then turn in the one that we issued them. But those numbers are not very high, to be honest with you. Where I saw most of the students coming from, were from our upper class and mostly our senior class, because the juniors and senior machines were not brand-new ones like the ninth-grade machines. So some of those students were like, I'd rather bring in my Mac than, than use the one that was given to me, although I appreciated it, but I'd rather use my Mac. So that was what we found most in the upper class, when that was happening.
Okay, I think the comment was, was it the Acer? Is that what they use in the ninth grade?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I think it was the startup, like they have to keep rebooting, rebooting, and then, and then something happens.
And I haven't heard that as of recent. Back in November, if I was sitting with you then, I would say it was, it was definitely happening. I have not heard that recent, so I'll have to look into that, if that still is happening.
I'll tell this person the, that there should be a fix for that. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brannigan, thanks as always for such a very detailed and rich plan that you put before us. I really appreciate your time in presenting it. I don't really have any questions for you, because it's so detailed. Like, I comment on lots of things, but I just really appreciate the career of the week and the Future Fridays, that's quite amazing and powerful. The guidance, I know we had a lot of talk about that even during the budgeting process, and that flipped to the school counseling mindset. That's really powerful. I think I took a bunch of notes here. The, and the Wellness Strong. You know, just lots of elements that you've talked about over a number of years, and as you've chipped away at multiple things, you and your folks in the buildings. Really appreciate the work that went into this plan. Thank you.
Mr. Brannigan, before you leave, there is one thing that I want to bring up related to that, as I thought about the budget process in last year, and it was part of your, your school plan. Last year, we added a special education teacher to the biology department. And how did that work out?
The Project Success Program is where we added that special educator. And the program really has had a pretty interesting journey this year, and we've been really proud of what they've accomplished. The professional learning community that's been created by those teachers, which I think was not what we anticipated, but just a very natural kind of collaboration and engagement about how to move students forward. And, and I think that's been a huge addition, is having that support in biology. So thank you for allowing that to happen.
Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Paul, for this presentation, and all the work of all the teachers, students, parents that worked on this, too. And that, the curriculum on the wall, is it something that's going to be, how are you going to work that? I love the idea of knowing more than just what my student's going to tell me, because ninth graders, hey, what'd you do today? I think Marty used to say that, hey, what do you do today? Hmm, you got to dig deeper. And even when you dig deeper, you don't always know. I like that idea.
I think it would be kind of a snapshot, when I, if I use the example as a department chair, when we used to put the curriculum on the wall up, it was really just the basics. It was the standards. It was the content. We're doing the French Revolution, and here are the standards, and here are the skills that we want our students to be able to do. And then every month, we would just keep changing it. So you were charting the curriculum as you went, but you were then also making sure the fact that every teacher who was walking into that office was able to see, this is where we all are. And you could also then see the continuum of grades nine, grade 10, and grade 11, and grade 12. And the idea would be, or the hope would be, that it would be something that maybe would be done electronically. It would be something that would be on our website, or something of just really the beginnings of taking what we do on our, in our pacing guides, in our curriculum guides, and really just be able to say to our community, this is what your students are doing on a monthly basis, and these are the targets we're trying to get them to. And then if it's coupled with the literacy strands and the goals of literacy, as well as those expectations of 21st century learning, I think it will give families, and our students as well, a depth of understanding as, of answering the question, why do we have to do what we're doing as well?
And then, I'll, I'll, I'll keep saying it, too, like everyone else, the Wellness Strong. As I mentioned just earlier, about the whole child, that, you know, not just the whole child, but now you're talking about this, also looking at the staff, the faculty, the staff members there. It's, it's great. We've talked about wellness many times here over the years. Rich and I have talked about it, different programs that we'd like to see potentially. This, maybe it's not an actual physical class called health, you know, in-depth, but the wellness piece is now going to be about being well in other things, right choices. You've always talked about, could you have made a, you didn't do something wrong, what could you have done differently that would have had a better outcome? You, you, when you talk about a student doing something that may not have been the best choice, making better choices. So I think of wellness of that similar piece. It's almost like an extension of that, but an expansion of that. And it excites me to see how this is going to be incorporated next year, and I'm very excited that it's in there, because sometimes, we don't get it in every house. Thank you.
Mr. Brannigan, thank you very, very much. And Mr. Chair Mike?
Final items, excuse me, I haven't spoken in a while. MCAS 2.0 update, through an inventory of all the principals, they're basically at the point where they're just wrapping up, doing final, final makeup testing and doing any paperwork that needs to be done in terms of, it used to be a lot more paperwork, but they do have to package up paperwork and send it back in. So we're in our final stretches here, the final days of May, the final stretches of MCAS. It's been a long process, but they've, they've all commented that they're learning to integrate their, their days and continue on with a normal school year, as much, as much as the stress that, that the MCAS 2.0 can put on an administrator in a school, they try to make it as least restrictive for students as possible. So it's been a learning environment, it's been a learning environment for the administrators this year, as we move forward with this, going with the model that's really all testing through computer. We were three through, three through eight, all computer-based testing. There's some high school testing that's still done, paper-based, but it has been a learning process, and they all made it through, and they're, they're all still here. So thank them all for still being here. And I, I did want to mention that I did get a, a report, I was going to say this in correspondence later, but I did, while Carolyn Lyons is still here, want to congratulate our PPS director. We did receive a, a communication today from the Special Education Leadership Institute. They had a very limited basis program, it's called the New Director of Special Education Leadership Institute. And she was invited in to that program. And will spend four or five days this summer, and then four or five days during the school year, with a number of other new special education leaders, and in a learning environment. And we're very proud that she was invited in. It's very limited in terms of the cost to the district. It's sponsored by the Deese, and sponsored by a couple of the folks. But we did receive a, a letter from Susan Reese, who the Accept Education Collaborative Institute Instructional Leader, and basically inviting her in, and she's agreed to go, right, Carolyn? Yeah, she's excited about going. So congratulations to Carolyn, and thank you for being here in support of your principals.
Mr. Lynch, I know it's the end of your report, but I do have one question for you. This, we're at the end of the school year, I know, because we get to see it in the emails. You've put out lots of positions, you know, sort of filling vacancies that we know were going to happen, and retirements and everything like that. I'm just wondering how we're doing as getting resumes for those positions?
Boy, we're, we are doing well. We've been surprised with some of the numbers of applicants. I think we were surprised with the fact that we had 115 applicants for the position of athletic director. We have upwards of 200 or so for each elementary teacher position. Some of the special ed positions, the numbers are fewer. There's a smaller pool that's out there, so we're trying to encourage that. We did, a number of us attended the career fair at Bridgewater State to try to encourage that. We do have applicants from that pool of folks that were able to go to that fair and visit the booth from Middleborough Public Schools. I sent, in my Friday Flash last week, the communication, I sent a picture of the table, and Dr. Gates, who's not here tonight, was able to set that up and, and set that program up. We have a, a really, a wide range of positions that go from ESP all the way up to, to teacher at this point. Some in the middle, like we have an assistant to the athletic director slash athletic trainer position that we morphed through the budget process this year. We have a good 15 to 20 applicants for that position. So it is, it is a sort of a rich environment out there for people looking for work, and we try to find the best we possibly can. So it is a process, and again, we certainly appreciate the principals and their teams. They put teams together to interview, and they're already in the interviewing process. So we're, we're thankful for them and, and all the work they do. There's a hiring packet that's extremely technical in terms of what has to be done, reference calls, and all the rest. And so we do thank them for the work they're doing now, on top of everything else, so.
And if people from the community are interested, they can go to School Spring and search Middleborough.
Yes.
That, that's where all our pieces are located. Thank you.
Right, that is our primary hiring source, that we, in fact, we require all applicants to go through School Spring.
MSBA update, I don't have a lot for that since the last time we met, but I do want to make one important piece. We've done some factoring and figuring, and in both the Middle High School project and the Memorial Early Childhood Center, we are several hundred thousand dollars ahead of the game and saving the town a considerable amount of money. We could see savings is up to about 300,000 in the high school project, and close to 200,000 in the, the early childhood project.
And the MEK project is approximately $250,000 below budget. We've mentioned that before. And when all is said and done, the 1.4 million that was appropriated at town meeting for the high school project was anticipated at coming in $435,000 under that, for the entire feasibility, feasibility project. So we're, we're very pleased with that. That's, that's a good deal of money. And also, if you wanted to mention, Mr. Chair, that, that the, the land deliberations continue with the diocese of Boston. The diocese of Boston and their council today agreed that they are going to release this if the town of Middleborough wants to purchase it. So that is a, a pretty large piece of land, and, and the price tag on that is $285,000 for a nine-acre parcel. And that is there. We have a meeting next week, the building committee meeting next Wednesday. And we thank the Chair and Mr. Jivononi for their continued involvement in that.
And the town set June 26th has a special town meeting date to purchase the land. A couple of things, so people realize, the article in there puts that land under our control. That was the decision of the town council.
The Anne-Marie Town Council.
Town council asked for that. Clearly, as we've said over and over again, we are looking for a small spa, a small portion that, about a little less than an acre. And we believe that there would be more land available for other things that the town wanted to do. And we, we've had that conversation over and over again. But the appraisal came back great, and we had a very good negotiation with the, with the diocese, and everything went as wonderfully as you can imagine.
And the importance of this land currently, even with the current high school, is emergency access. It's access from Wood Street. It's another egress in and out of a, a very large parcel of land. We, right now, are bottlenecked. We have one entrance and one exit. Traffic is an issue. So that is something that the joint chiefs, chief police and the fire chief, have agreed and written a letter saying that this was, would be a very positive for a new high school or the current high school. for a new high school or the current high school. So, we are looking forward to that vote on June 26th at 7:00 PM. It is a Monday, and we would invite everyone to please attend. We do need to establish at a quorum of 150 voters, and it is important that people do attend, so.
Can we put an item under action for our next meeting to, for us to decide if we want to vote favorable or unfavorable action on that item?
Sure.
As a school committee?
The other thing is, we could wait until the following meeting too, us, because both will be in, in time. So, I'll see how the agenda holds up for what's coming up. But thank you. We'll make sure that's on. School community updates. I know Mr. Stevens mentioned that he attended charting the course, so thank you for telling us about that. I did want to point out to everybody that I'm very excited, because the MSC is putting out a summer institute this year, which they haven't done for quite some time, probably since the early 90s. What we realize is lots of school community members can't attend the November meeting, because they work, and it doesn't work out for them. But for some people, it makes sense to attend the summer institute. I will be attending the summer institute. If people are interested, please let us know, and we'll register you. I, I think it would be a good, for everybody who can attend.
I believe it's in Marlborough.
Marlborough.
Yes.
The wonderful city of Marlborough. Action items. We've already made, taken care of the letter. Yes, Mr. Jimenez?
I would move that we approve the following warrants, warrant numbered 435, 436, and 450 as presented this evening.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As we've already approved the letter requesting donations for that second annual kindergarten summer social at the Soul Homestead on August 16th, I would move that we move on, move the Bristol Plymouth Technical Vocational High School Relay for Life overnight from June 16th to 17th, 2017 National Honor Society Field Trip.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Discussion. I will say this is a usual piece. Students participate in the Relay for Life each year. It's usually the Honor Society also. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I moved-
Oh, hold on one second. Mr. Brandigan, could I ask you to come down for the discussion about the Florida trip? Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Class of 2018 Florida trip for the Middleborough High School, April of 2018.
For the purpose of discussion, do I hear a second?
Second. Discussion. Paul, can you talk a little about the trip? As, I like your talk.
Sure. The Class of 2018 has the opportunity, if approved, to do their April vacation in Florida, as we have done for many, many years, as their celebration of years of school. It is an all-inclusive trip. That includes a grad night experience at either Universal Studios, or Islands of Adventure, or Disney, which is what we did this year. I added in some, we've always done airboat rides, but I chose a different company this year, because I wanted to have some educational pieces to it, that a little bit more than what we were doing. And there is a new company that we negotiated with that actually did a whole environmental piece and ecological piece with our students as well, about kind of the land and the, and the water, and the species and things in Florida, and just the impact it has on the environment. And, and they were able to hold alligators and things like that, which was really quite cool. And it really is a, an experience for students that, what is nice about the trip is that they are able to go for a week, and they, the, their own journey on this trip, and especially them as the class coming together, is really quite something to see. So, I don't-
And Paul, my understanding is, we, we, you asked for approval of this trip this early, primarily because it allows you to get the best deal.
Right. I always ask in the spring, I'm sorry if I-
No, no, bro.
-asked you a question. We always ask in the spring, because it allows for me, because of the numbers of students that go, I have to be able to start working on airline tickets, because if I wait too long, it's going to be completely out of reach. So, what, by, if you approve this, that it allows for me to engage $100 deposit from every senior who wants to go. And that allows for me to be able to begin the process of securing a deposit for plane tickets. The students would do that now, be doing now in the end of the school year, over the summer and into the fall. And we lock the trip in around the end of September, even though that'll have plane tickets. We try to lock it down by the end of September to know the fact that this is a group that is going. And then we also have a waiting list, and students that may decide they don't want to go, and allowing me to pick up another student who wants to go as well. So, that's why I always ask in the spring before.
Discussion. Mr. Lambert?
How much does this trip usually end up costing?
This year's trip was just about 1,700.
Is there a, I don't know, like a, I don't know, some sort of way to help raise money for students who might not be able to afford it?
We've, to be honest, and we've never done a fundraiser for it, and, and I suppose we could. Because the students know from, as a ninth grader, that this has been, or could be an opportunity for them, that it ends up being something that, for many of them that go, they've, they've, they've kind of put money aside for many of them for a period of time. And that for students who really want to go, and we've been able to make it work with them. So, any student who's wanted to go, and they have been able to do at least a piece of it, we do our best to try to make sure that they go. So, we've never done a formal fundraiser for it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know that you indulged me last year. I sat in your office, you talked me through kind of this trip, and I think we talked a little bit about, you know, my challenges with it. I respect everything you do in that building and your staff. I'm still struggling because the field trips that we get usually attached to those field trip, especially the out-of-state requests come. How does this, and it's very detailed, align to the standards that we're working on back in the Middleborough, Middleborough Public School? So, I struggle with this, where it's not attached to something like that. I recognize there's some celebrations to be had. I really appreciate the ones that take place in Middleborough, where all students have access. So, I'm still struggling with this, because when it lands on me, it feels like a, a district-sponsored spring break of sorts, and I'm just, in my mind, I can't, I just can't reconcile that. So, I appreciate you indulging me that thought bubble. But as a result, I will probably, this year, I think last year I abstained, out of respect for our conversation, I think this year, as it's before me, I'll probably vote no on this trip. But I appreciate what you're doing for your students. Thank you.
Thanks.
Further discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It is five to one. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Brandigan. For correspondence, I, we put on your, in front of you tonight is the invitations to the Community Evening School. So, are you aware of that? Do we have any other correspondence?
I just, I wanted to let the school committee know that tomorrow, in your drop boxes, I'm going to be dropping an indoor environmental services, air tech report that was done at the HBB Mayflower Complex. We had agreed with the Middleborough Education Association that after we did mitigation with regard to the air quality issues that, that were brought forth a couple of years ago, that we would do some ongoing testing. And I, Mr. Cutino and I were able to communicate about this, and we were able to get this done at the, sort of the change of season this year. The report has come back. I have shared it with Mr. Cutino. I will share it with you, with this just came in today. But it indicates that everything is positive in that complex, and there are no dangers to anyone. And this includes air and mold, any, any possibility. But it is a company that, that Mr. Hutchinson identified, and it, they are fairly local, but it's a very comprehensive test. There's a report of findings, there's a report of conclusion, and there's also a report, a more detailed report. And my apologies to Lisa Andrade and Derek Thompson, because they did not know about this, it just came in this afternoon. So, you'll get a copy of this tomorrow too, also. So, that's some correspondence that came in today. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything else they wish to bring up? Okay. Chair wants to take a motion to enter an executive session, procedure number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, I do declare, we will be discussing the secretaries and many bus drivers' negotiations.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we go into executive session for that reason, and only come out for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Do I hear a second?
This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Givin?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for your stay.